Good evening, everyone. Welcome to, thank you, to the Norwood Zoning Board Meeting of December 3, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Media and also GoToMeet. I would ask everyone at this time to please silence all electronic devices. Before we begin, I'd like to explain the format for the hearings. All parties wishing for comments and testifying matters before the board, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. The applicant or their representative will address the board and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. Members of the board may ask questions before, during, or after the applicant's presentation. Following questions and comments from the board, we will open up the meeting to the general public, and anyone wishing to speak, and that will include any written comments that we received, will note. All questions and comments will go through the chair, and I ask everyone to be respectful of everyone's opinions. Following that portion, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to address any concerns or make a final statement. The board then can consider closing the public hearing and moving to vote or continuing the matter before us. Okay, this evening, the first order of business is 65 Cranmore Road, and this is continued from 10/1, 2024, and also from our November meeting. Is the applicant here? The applicant here for Cranmore Road. Okay. So, a motion to continue this to the next meeting to give the applicant an opportunity to discuss it, or is everyone prepared to vote?
Maybe wait.
Yeah, yeah, we'll give him an opportunity in case the applicant shows up. The next order of business will be 114 Audubon Road, and I will read into the record the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Port of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on December 3, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Ralph, my apologies, Kurt Lahar, for case 24-29 with respect to the property located at 114 Audubon Road, Norwood, Mass., in the single-residence zoning districts. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062, and will be also available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to the zoning bylaw, Section 5.4.4, to construct a one-story addition on the northwest corner of the house in the side setback. The house is currently nonconforming in the side setback, and the proposed addition would increase the nonconformity. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing calmdev@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and this originally read on the Norwood Record on November 14 and on November 21. Is the applicant here?
Yeah, we are here.
Wow, that was good. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, we are Dave and Sarah Cullen, 114 Audubon Road.
Oh, I remember you folks. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good to see you.
Good, you too. So, we are at the homeowners of 114 Audubon Road, and we're here, as you said, requesting a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw 5.4.4 to build a one-story addition. It is a, it is, it'll be completely on an existing foundation. Our back patio is a concrete slab patio with a full foundation. Our basement and garage are underneath it, so this will not be increasing the footprint of the property at all. It'll, the entire addition will be on the existing foundation.
Is this Ralph from Cross Street? Is he doing the work?
Ralph Corolla.
Yeah. Cross Street, living on Cross Street, R and K?
Um, I don't think so.
I think it's him, okay. Okay, all right. Anything else, Sarah?
Uh, no, just happy to answer any questions.
Okay, all righty. Who's Matt? Matt, you're voting on this, right? Yep. Matt, any questions or comments for the applicant?
No, no.
Rachel?
Um, just to comment that you answered my question. It was just not making sense to me how this was an existing foundation, but it's a patio, but you have your, there's a bulkhead, an existing bulkhead that goes down to the basement.
Right, so if you, from the west border roadside, we have like a second driveway that goes down underneath, so our garage is actually underneath that patio.
Okay.
And the basement, so if you're looking at, actually, from our neighbor's side at the bulkhead, like you'll see like the garage window, right, you know, a half window under there, so it's already, it's a full foundation.
And so, the reason you are putting it in this proposed footprint as opposed to continuing the line of the existing structure is because that's just where the existing foundation has been laid?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. It allows us to use the full existing, so we can, yeah, have an entrance kind of going straight into it instead of kind of the side, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, great.
Shannon? That was, so it looks like this is actually only increasing the side setback by a couple of inches relative to where your existing bulkhead is, then? Is that correct?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Great. No further questions?
Okay. You in? Oh, Al, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
You're good, okay. All righty, you can have a seat, and we'll open this up, if anyone has any comments.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak on this matter, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone at GoToMeeting?
There is someone on Google Meet with their hand raised, Jim Kirkor.
Okay, Jim, if you could state your name and address for the record and...
Hi, I'm sorry about that, I didn't meet and raise my hand.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm just sorry about that.
Okay. Great. It's just, as you indicated, Shannon, three inches increase in the nonconformity. There is no one here that spoke in favor, no one here that spoke against it, but that information, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Matt and seconded by Shannon to close the public hearing. Al?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Matt?
Yep.
The public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
Um, I think, given the very small increase in the side setback, increasing the nonconformity, it's a single floor aligning with the other, the rest of the house. There are two-floor homes. I think, you know, in approximation to the property, it will continue to be a single-family home. I don't really see any things that we wouldn't be able to say yes to relating to the special permit criteria, so I would move to approve the special permit application as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Al. Al, on the motion?
Yes.
Shannon on the motion?
Yes.
Rachel on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck, Dave and Sarah. Nice to see you guys again. Good luck. Okay, we'll call, we'll go back to call and see if 64 Cranmore proponent is here. Is the proponent here for 65 Cranmore? Yes, please come up. We're going to continue this public hearing, and if you have any more information to provide for us, that's all we're going to take into consideration, Al, is any new information you may have to support your proposal? And name and address for the record, Sarah.
Good evening again. Marvin Solomon, professor of computer engineering. After I graduated, I...
I know, I just need your name and address for the record.
Yes.
And then, anything you want to, if you have any new information, we've had two public hearings on this, so if you have any more information to provide for the board to support your application, we'll accept it at this time.
Yes, I have the support of what the building inspector said last time. Last time, he said he visited the property, and he said the property looks vacant. Actually, as I mentioned earlier, when we found the property is too small for us, I moved out with my family, and for the last six months, I have spent most of my time outside the United States, as shown by my passport here.
Okay, okay.
And then, yeah.
Do you have any more information that supports your proposal this evening? We're going to vote on it this evening. If you don't have anything, we do have some information from the building inspector that I'll share, but do you have any more information that's new to this proposal?
I appreciate your time.
Okay.
I respect your opinion.
We're going to vote on it this evening, okay?
And I welcome your opinion respectfully.
Thank you, sir.
If you approve it, I will be happy. I will show you beautiful building. If no, I will look somewhere else.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, yep. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to, that has any new information they'd like to provide? Yes, sir, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Steve McFarland, and I'm 51 Cranmore Road.
Yes.
I am on the east side of Susan Guy, which is her, which is a neighbor to 65. Her concerns were, he does run some sort of a business out of there, cars, I believe used cars. I've seen a couple of people coming in and out of there before. I'm going to say it's not real, real disturbance. I'm not home that much, but I know Susan's had some very, a lot of concerns with it. My concern with it, putting, having an addition to the house would bring value to the property, would, you know, increase the values for the neighborhood, which I'm for, but I think she's worried about maybe he'd be running a business out of there. And my concern with that, too, if he's doing that, maybe he might put a couple of renters in, which it's, you know, it's a little family neighborhood, it's quiet, there's a school there, and we have an issue, what, 289 Dean Street, on Dean and Tamworth, there's a gentleman there that has five or six, eight cars in his driveway, and he's got, you know, he's selling cars or whatever he's got out of there. We don't want that. That's all, that's all I can say.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to address that? If anyone has any new evidence to provide, yes, please, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I really don't have anything new to say that you already haven't heard. My concern is him really never giving a straight answer here for the past few meetings. One minute he has transport plates, the next meeting he has three cars registered there, the next day there were no cars there whatsoever. I don't want it to turn out to be the same as my neighbor mentioned on the corner of Dean Street in Tamworth with the garage. If I could ask to suggest the building inspector come by in three or four months, right now he's laying low, there's no cars over there, but it will be business as usual in a few months. That's my concern, living in a residential area, it's not commercially zoned. I feel he's doing this for his business and nothing else. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate giving my...
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak to this matter, anyone at GoToMeeting? Okay, I did ask the building inspector on several occasions to go there, and I've been there a few times myself, and in our packet was some information from the building inspector, and I'm sure you all received it, and the building inspector has reported to me on two occasions that there's been no such activity as running a business. We certainly will stay on this, but it's not part of the criteria in regards to the special permit, but we did, out of courtesy for the neighbors, hold this off twice to ensure that there was no business being run there, and part of the suggestion I will make to the board that we, even though we make that, it's in our decision anyway, good housekeeping, that we put in our decision, if we so decide to vote for this, that the building inspector do keep an eye on it. But there's been no evidence to the contrary, although it's been stated, but there's been no physical evidence. We have physical evidence now from the building inspector, and I think the gentleman has done, have heard your, heard your, heard your call, heard your call, and has cleaned up his yard, and, believe me, I live in that neighborhood too, so I will drive by there also, and if I think that in any way, if this is granted, it's a violation of this special permit, we'll revoke it. So, those are my comments on it. Any comments from any other members of the board? Okay, we'll entertain, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, I agree with everything you said, but, and maybe I'm wrong, but this is not our purview, right?
It, it's, you're correct, as for God, what he's asking for tonight.
Right.
It is not, but as the comments that came in, we wanted to make sure that he wasn't running that business.
No, I appreciate that, but, but...
So, but to your point, you are correct, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, all we have the authority to decide tonight is the addition to the structure.
Correct.
So, you know, as much as I empathize, and if in fact it's real, I assume that the building department or somebody whose responsibility that is will handle it appropriately.
Yeah.
Right? And I've driven by a couple of times myself, and I haven't seen any cars there, but be that as it may, that's, you know...
Yeah, you are correct, you are correct. Any other comments from any members of the board? Yeah?
I've been by only once, and I did see cars. There was one car, I don't know who it was registered and on to that location, but the thing that just concerned me, the gentleman just said, "Nothing's going on," and he's been out of town for two months. That tells me that, why are you all of a sudden out of town and coming back in? I just don't like the premise of the business. I'd like to see this thing continue for six months to see what goes on, rather than vote to approve or deny right now, because I'm not, I'm not ready to vote tonight any affirmative.
Okay, so is that a motion to continue for six months?
Yes.
Okay, that would need a second. Is there a second? Okay, the motion fails out.
Okay.
Any other comments from any other members of the board? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Matt to close the public hearing. Seconded by Shannon. Al to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon to close the public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Matt to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. The public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? If we could just get a percentage that we're voting on, we have the, do you have the plans there?
The percent increase?
The percent increase in the habitable living space, so it's indicated in the record, and any motion should include that there'll be no business that's not allowed to be conducted on the premises.
Which would automatically revoke the special permit.
Right, correct.
I believe it was the second story.
Right, it was the second story.
In its entirety, but I don't see this square footage of the existing...
Well, it will exceed the 25%.
Right, yes.
So, we'll, we'll make that part of, exceed the 25%, that's allowed. Okay, any other comments before we take the vote on this?
Yeah, no, I think this is, this has been a challenging one, given the concerns that have been raised, and I think they have been elevated to the building inspector, and I think, as, as Matt had mentioned, that's not really within our purview to be enforcing sort of zoning and use, and I think if this was a regular case that had come in without some of that additional information about concern of business, this would be a pretty cut and dry, you know, same footprint, you know, one floor up conforms with the rest of the neighborhood, so I think that within the authority that we have, it seems like a reasonable request for a special permit.
Okay, and I'll accept that as a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rachel. So, on the motion to approve, it does exceed the 25%, and we will note in the comments that there's to be no business run from a single-family residence, if we can put that in the decision when you type that up. Alex?
Beyond, is there some allowable business use?
There is.
There's like accessory business uses where someone has home offices.
Let's get right to the point. No automotive businesses to be allowed on the premises, okay? Let's, let's word it that way.
Okay.
Because that was the issue and the concern amongst the neighbors. He can run a, we did check with the town clerk, he can run a computer business, there's no DBA needed, he can do that, I spoke to Mary Lou Folen myself, but the automotive business, no. I was good with everybody, because that was the concern, that was the concern. Okay, there's been a motion made by Matt and seconded by Shannon. Matt on the motion?
Yes.
Rachel on the motion?
Yes.
Shannon on the motion?
Yes.
Al on the motion?
No.
And the chairman votes yes, that's approved four to one. Sarah, good luck, we're going to be watching you. Okay, the next matter before us is 76 Astor Ave. This is continued from 11/12/2024, and, sir, state your name and address for the record. I read the public hearing, notice last meeting, we continue it, so this is case number 24-27, 76 Astor Avenue, Norwood. Yes, sir?
Great. Phil Silverman from the law firm of Vicente LLP, 800 Boilson Street, Boston, Mass. Also here with Brian Almeida, represents the company locally as well. And just by way of background, I'm here because my firm is a national marijuana law firm, and seeing the kind of work we do, represent a lot of these companies that try to come into a community.
Can you just speak up, sir?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Represent a lot of these companies that try to come into a community and make sure that, you know, this is done in a way that doesn't negatively impact the community, and so we work with all the local authorities to try to ensure, you know, that this can work and be safe and secure. So, what we're trying to do here, many of you may be aware that there is currently at 76 Astor Avenue, a medical marijuana treatment center facility. It's been operating for a couple of years now. What we're seeking to do is add to that the component of adult-use marijuana, otherwise known as recreational marijuana, in a retail setting at that facility. There really are not a lot of differences between the two operations, to be quite honest. There's, in the medical realm, you know, a patient comes, they have to show a registration card from the state in order to be granted access to the facility. In the case of adult use, it's an ID, you've got to be 21 years or older in order to access this facility, so that's one of the really few differences here. But in terms of operationally, you won't see any real difference here. There's no changes to the site that are proposed, there's ample parking on the site, it's about 128 parking spaces here. I doubt you would see any more than 10 to 15 used at peak hour. Most of the time, you're probably using more like seven or eight spaces at the facility, but really, no changes, you know, whatsoever, same lighting, same landscaping. From the state licensing perspective, all of those rules are the same, whether it's medical marijuana or adult-use marijuana. No changes to all of the security measures that occur, because again, they're all the same in the medical setting. So, you'll see, you know, cameras all over this facility. We get a 360-degree view around the facility, we know who's coming and going. Every room where marijuana is stored or handled has a camera on it, that's all the same. All of the inventory that comes into the store is tracked by what's called a seed-to-sale inventory system. So, the product will come in, and it goes, it gets barcoded and weighed, and goes into the inventory system, and there are inventories done, you know, random times, it's generally every couple of days. And so, for example, if one day you're, you know, weighing a package that weighs one ounce, and then the next week, that same package only weighs a quarter of an ounce, the inventory system lets you know that. You go back to the video, which is kept for 90 days, that I mentioned from the cameras, and if you find that an employee has diverted that marijuana product outside the normal course, the term, the employee has terminated the no-tolerance policy in the Cannabis Control Commission for any kind of, you know, diversion of the product outside the normal course of distribution. Additionally, we have onsite security personnel during business hours, we also have 24/7 monitoring off-site of the facility, so we always have an eye on this facility. Also, there's alarms at all of the doors and windows, and panic and duress alarms on the interior. So, you know, these are very well-regulated facilities. I think if you went around to all of the cities and towns around the state and you asked the local police chief if they've ever had a problem, you'd find almost no concerns from these operations. It's not an inviting facility for somebody who has some kind of a criminal intent, there's just too many, it's too difficult to get in, too difficult not to be on camera, you know, and then once you're in, you have to get buzzed into the next place, and it's just not something you want to be stuck in, you know, when, when the local authorities come. So, we haven't seen those types of problems that were anticipated in Massachusetts, and I see no reason it would be any different at this facility. I don't think this facility has any, had any issues in its medical operation, and, you know, it wouldn't, we wouldn't expect it to on the adult-use side either. I also would mention to you that there is no onsite consumption of marijuana at this facility. We are very careful to monitor our parking areas and make sure that that doesn't go on here. There's nothing worse from our perspective than having that go on, and we also do a lot of customer education when they come into the store, explaining to them, you take this product, you don't use it onsite, you don't smoke it before you get in the car, you don't smoke it in the car, you go home, you take it home, that's where you use it. We're, we're pretty good about making sure that anybody that's a customer here understands that as well. So, you know, again, the theme here, not a lot of change from what we're doing, but happy to take any questions you might have about the facility and the operation.
Any questions? Matt, go ahead.
Yes, sir. With respect to customers, how many on an average day do you serve now, and how many do you anticipate the delta will be under the new...
Yeah, you'll see, these are hard questions to answer in the sense that there are still communities that are legalizing and bringing this onboard, and that changes, you know, who shows up at your facility if the town next door, for example, suddenly decides to allow it. But I think right now, what you're probably seeing is 50 patients a day at most.
Fifty or 50?
Probably 50, maybe, more likely 30. I'm just saying, on a maximum day, you might see 50. You know, I think, I think this will be a popular facility. It won't be one of, you know, one of the busiest in the state by any means, it's just, there's 350 facilities in Massachusetts, retail facilities now, so the days of what you might have seen on television from five, six years ago, when everybody was crowding to facilities, you just don't see that anymore. I think you might see 200 on a given day, that would be a good day. Your peak hour might be something like 30 people, but they're in and out, so, you know, you generally, the average visit to one of these facilities is eight to 10 minutes. A lot of it's done online, so you know they're coming in, you have their order prepared, and they're, they're right in and right out.
I'm just curious, I'm familiar with the industry, and I know that there are a lot of shops that are closing because of the cost of the product. Where are you guys within that sort of realm? Is this going to help you stay in business, or is this something that's just an addition in any event?
Well, to be blunt...
Be blunt.
You, you can't survive as a medical-only facility, okay? People have options, okay? There's a lot of people, quite frankly, a lot of people that, that might be medical patients, that rather than going through the state process of getting a registration card, going and getting a doctor to approve it, that sort of thing, they'll opt not to do that, and they'll just go to a recreational shop. You know, that, that, quite frankly, there's a lot of people, the fastest-growing segment of the industry is people over 50 years old who are coming for aches and pains and that sort of thing. They don't necessarily want to be on a state database, which you have to be in medical, there may be job-related reasons for that, and so you'll see them go to a recreational shop. Granted, they don't get, they, they have to pay a 20% tax at the recreational shop as opposed to medical, that's why this company will keep medical, it's a benefit to their patients, but you really, it's very difficult to survive on 30 to 50 patients a day. So, you know, they'll have to price accordingly. I, I would say to you also, by the way, in terms of, you know, the notion that they're closing all over the place, initially, there was a wave because there were some towns that granted way too many licenses, okay, and that was bound to happen. But, you know, the other circumstances, it's, it's similarly oversaturation in some places, okay? You won't see that here. This is the only one, this is kind of a unique circumstance that allows this here, it can't really apply to anybody else, because it only applies here, because this was originally a medical facility. You don't have another medical facility that can sort of convert to adult use, so you won't see it. So, this will be the only place in Norwood, you know, what we, what we used to say, sort of as a, sort of as a guideline, was in order to survive financially, you need... to survive financially, you needed, you know, a recreational shop needed a ratio of like one shop for maybe ten thousand people, ten-thousand-person population. You have substantially more than that in Norwood. So I think this shop will do just fine, but there is competition. You know, there are other towns, you know, ten miles away or so, where you could go, and quite frankly, your customers, your residents are going there right now and getting their products. But, you know, you'll bring a lot of those home, and you'll gain the benefit of that because all of the sales are subject to a three percent sales tax that goes back to the town.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Rachel.
Thank you. You had mentioned smoking. Is that the sole method of ingestion for, what are the other?
Sure.
Products?
So there's numerous, and there's new ones being invented all the time. But, you know, there is sort of traditional flower that's smoked, obviously. There's also edible products, chocolates, candies, that sort of thing. There are vaporizers, sometimes the, especially medical patients tend to prefer vaporize. It's not so harsh on the lungs.
So, sorry to cut you off, just to make sure I'm following along. So the applicant currently offers those in their medical establishment.
Yes.
And runs the gamut of methods of ingestion now.
Yes.
And then it would just not change the inventory that's being proposed at all? Just who would be able to access that?
That's correct. I mean, listen, there may, any business is going to respond to what its customers are looking for. So if forty percent of your sales right now are flower, for example, and there's just a bigger appetite for other types of, you know, whether it's edibles or other things, they're going to adjust to that. So I can't tell you it's going to be the same proportion.
Right.
But all the types of products are being sold now and will continue to be sold. It's just, access will be for people twenty-one years of age and older.
And I've read out all of the materials in our packet, but if you could go into a little bit more depth of what you talked about a moment ago, from the state level, about the conversion from medical to recreational and how that applies in this instance?
Sure. So I'll read you the language. It's a state statute. And what they were trying to do, this was back, I think it was somewhere back around two thousand and eighteen, is they were trying to ensure that if, if a place had allowed medical, you know, when medical was quite frankly, the only option, they felt that that was kind of a signal that they should also be allowing recreational. There was no real distinction between the two in the legislature's view. Think of that what you may. But so, they put in a statutory provision that said, zoning ordinances or bylaws shall not operate to prevent the conversion of a medical marijuana treatment center licensed no later than July one of two thousand and seventeen to a marijuana establishment engaged in the same type of activity. So, again, in English, they were saying, you can't have a zoning ordinance that stops you from converting one of these medicals, provided that it was licensed before July one of two thousand and seventeen, which this one was. So.
Sorry, just on that very specific point, licensing, is that by the state CCC? Or is that by the zoning special permit by the town?
That would be licensed by the CCC, okay? So as long as it was licensed prior to July two, one of two thousand and seventeen as a medical marijuana treatment center, you can't stop it from going to adult-use by using zoning, okay? So what Norwood did is somewhat unique, okay? There was granted a desire, I think, to prohibit marijuana, recreational marijuana sales in the town. So what they did was they did it two ways. They passed a general bylaw and they passed a zoning bylaw, okay? Both ways. If, if your goal was really just to pass a prohibition, the easiest way to do it is a general bylaw because you go to town meeting and all you need is a fifty percent plus one vote to do it. The harder thing to do is zoning, okay? I explain that because what the case law that grew up around this, it's not just the marijuana field, it's all zoning altogether. What it says is, just because you call something a general bylaw as opposed to zoning, it might not be a general bylaw. It might in fact be a zoning bylaw, depending upon what you're trying to do, depending upon the nature of what you're regulating, okay? So when the town passes a general and a zoning, what is that? Are they really trying to make this a general bylaw or zoning? Well, I think there's a hint there, okay? Because of the vote threshold, the fact that you would, if you wanted to just prohibit it, you would never want to have to get a sixty-six percent vote for a zoning bylaw. The fact that they tried to do that, and they did in fact do it, tells you they thought it very well might be a zoning bylaw. And I think that's really what it is. It's a, you're regulating a use of land, you're prohibiting this particular use. So they did both, but I think any court would say, it's really zoning. I mean, you almost admitted it by passing both. So does that make sense? If I need to explain that again, I can.
No, and I don't have any further questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Shannon?
And you had referenced, geographically, where is the closest to Norwood recreational sale facility right now? Just to get a sense of what the closest.
So I think if you're going north on Route One, I think you'd have to get up into Boston. I think up that way would be West Roxbury, probably, maybe Roselandale.
There's one in Sharon.
Yep, Sharon. South and North Attleboro.
Okay.
So I think those are generally the ones.
Okay. Nothing else right now?
Yeah?
But the recreational, does that change the status from a nonprofit to a profitable operation?
It doesn't automatically change that. I suspect that at some point, the company may want to do that itself. When you were a medical facility, you had to be nonprofit.
That's right.
Had to be. That's right. But you don't have to be for, and you no longer have to be for medical, by the way. So what we saw, you know, years ago when this first started out, is everybody changed over to a for-profit. I suspect this company will do that, but I haven't actually talked to them about whether they'll do that or not, but it is a possibility.
Are you familiar with the revenue produced by this company?
Enough to tell you that as medical, it's not significant. It's not, you know.
What do you project for recreational?
If I had to guess, and, and this is pure guesswork on my part, okay? Nobody can tell you, you know.
That's why they set budgets.
Right, I understand. I would be shocked if you didn't see three million dollars of sales a year, meaning.
That's all?
Well, I'm telling you, I wouldn't be shocked, I would be shocked if you didn't see at least that. I suspect it's closer to five million, could be as much as six. You've got a significant-sized town here. Normally, you'd see at least one more of these in town, you know, if we didn't have the prohibition. And you've got some surrounding towns that have prohibited. And I think if you're smart about marketing and reaching your audience, you'll probably reach that higher number. So I, I suspect you see something along the lines of a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax revenue from the business every year.
How much of the space are they going to take up with the retail over the medical?
It's all out of the same, the same space, footprint, but there is a dedicated point of sale for just medical, because you want to give your medical patients a little bit more privacy.
I didn't see quickly going through here. What is the total square foot that they operate?
I think it's about thirty-one hundred square feet.
If the rent's sent down to that area, they're going to have to do a lot more than five million dollars on the recreational part of it.
My client tells me, you know, it expects to do well, it expects to be profitable. That's, that's what I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. So you made, you just mentioned that they're prohibited, but mass general law overrides us. So this tells me you're going to have a monopoly of the marijuana establishments because no one else can get one.
In Norwood, that's the case. Unless you change that.
Right. No, okay.
One more question.
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Shannon.
In terms of this, the state general law, where it's the conversion automatically for anybody before a certain date, I assume, I know this is very heavily regulated, but is there anything around good standing? Or like, I haven't heard that there have been any problems with the business in town at all, but is that something that's considered when? I assume if there is a problem, the business is being so heavily regulated that it's either not functioning or it's already been addressed, but is that a factor in the conversion at all?
You know, I don't anticipate any issues with this, and I will tell you that the state, you know, is pretty strict about this. They're very, you know, they do inspections without notice, just to make sure that you're complying. I can tell you that our clients, we do our own inspections and we come and we show up. You know, they pay us to do this, and we walk through where we point out every issue that we see. And we've been pretty successful with our clients in avoiding any kind of problematic issues. You know, the reality here is, it's expensive to get this facility up and running. So none of these places have an interest in seeing, you know, underage people here or other kinds of criminal activity here. I think the track record of these places in Massachusetts is pretty exemplary in terms of, you know, compliance with regulatory requirements.
No more questions, thank you.
Yeah, regarding underage, what's the security procedure if someone goes in there that looks not to be twenty-one? What, is it just looking at the ID or the scanner?
There's a scanner.
It's a scanner?
Yeah, there's a scanner, it's right at the entry, and then, you know, they're going to go through that a second time at point of sale.
Okay. What's the procedure if somebody comes in and it blinks that this is a fake ID? What do you do with it?
I don't, actually, I've never been asked that question.
Well, you need to have a procedure in place because we want our police to be involved in that. In the liquor establishments, we have them take the ID.
I, I think that's probably something we can do. I got to check on the same regulations.
You're going to have to do it because we're going to make, put it in there.
I, I understand. It makes sense to me.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Delivery, no delivery, right?
So I don't know what the town has done with respect to that. You have the ability to prohibit delivery in town, if that's something that you want to do. But it's a, I think it requires either a vote or a notice to the Cannabis Control Commission that that's what your intent is.
Well, going back to your original application, you said no home deliveries for patients or caregivers.
Right.
But why would that change?
I'm just trying to, I mean, quite frankly, and we weren't involved in the, you know, at that time.
Right.
I'm not sure that's something that should have been allowed. State law sort of requires delivery with medical marijuana. I mean, you've got patients that just can't get to the facility.
So state law says medical has to have it.
Has to have delivery.
But not for what you're asking for, correct?
It says that there's a procedure by which a town can prohibit deliveries. You can do that. And if that's the decision of the town, we understand.
Well, I'm not quite sure if that's our decision, the Board of Selectmen. You've been to the Board of Selectmen for this change, right?
For a host-community agreement, yes.
And also the modification from medical to whatever you call it.
Yeah, the way that's effectuated is, we have to get what's called a host-community agreement.
Right.
That sort of lays out the factors. And I think if I'm, I, I think the select board did not prohibit delivery.
But you did get approval from the?
We did.
Yeah.
And it's been signed by the town.
Signed, okay.
Yep.
And it's three percent of the total sales?
Three percent sales tax, yeah.
Has the ownership group changed at all?
So my understanding is that there's been turnover of the ownership group. Right now, in fact, there's a receiver appointed to operate this, you know, because ownership was unable to make the payments that were necessary.
Speak up, sir. Speak up.
Sorry.
Speak up, yep.
Apologies.
Yep.
Again, you know, there's a process that you go through at the state level. You know, the receiver will have to sort of get state approval of a change of ownership. Quite frankly, I think you do too. Or certainly, if you want to have that, you know, come before you, I think you can on a change of ownership.
Hey, it's in our, it's in our bylaws that any change of ownership, and I'm just trying to find it here, I read it earlier today.
Yep.
That you have to disclose all your owners, shareholders, partners, members, et cetera. In any event that these change, it has to be reported. So.
So I know the town was notified about the receiver.
Right.
But you would certainly, it would not be unusual for you to put a condition, notwithstanding that it's already in your bylaw, you could put it as a condition as well that, I think you want to, I think you probably want to have a threshold for that. In other words, you don't want to have us, have to come in here every time there's a five percent shareholder, you know, that changes hands. You probably.
Well, they do it for liquor establishments. Why would this be any different?
You can, I can tell you what, the most common way that it's done is that it's any time that there is a change of ownership or control that requires the consent of the Cannabis Control Commission. You also have to come in front of the town. I'm not telling you, you can't do it another way.
Yeah.
But that's the way you typically see it.
It's in receivership, and I understand that. At some point, it's going to come out of receivership, and I think that we should know who the operators, the shareholders are. Is it coming out of receivership, to Al's point, as a for-profit company or not-profit company?
I think you're entitled to that, and I think you can put that in as a condition.
Well, I'm not sure we can put it in a condition. I think we need that before we go forward.
This is David Engel. Can you hear me?
Sir, 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 when we open up the hearing, you'll have more than enough.
He's the principal of the company, it might be helpful.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And the receiver, by the way.
No, thank, thank you very much. If you could state your name and address and your position, sir?
I'm David Engel, and I'm the receiver for Middlesex Integrated Medicine. And I've been the receiver since October sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen. And we are, just to answer a few of the preliminary questions that we weren't sure of, we will not have on-premises consumption, we will not have delivery, we will not have any of the things that you asked about earlier. We will have somewhere between, we estimate, it's just estimation as, as our attorney said, between probably a hundred and two hundred patients a day. We will have the same security measures in place. And we will certainly, before we change ownership to another entity, you know, we have to, you know, approve, get that approved by the CCC. And we have, you know, we will certainly present those information to you to make sure that you guys are happy too. We are a compliant company that has full licensure to CCC, and we will be compliant. We're very rigid about compliance, and we are, we want to do anything that you guys like to, to make you feel comfortable with us. That's all we're going to do.
Did you say you've been the receiver since two thousand and thirteen?
No, I'm sorry, twenty-three.
Okay.
I'll start at the end, you know?
Anything else you want to add, sir?
Well, I just want to ask you a question. There were some unanswered questions today, and I just wanted to ask you questions that still are left unanswered, if you like.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir, for this gentleman, before we open up to the general public? Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on this matter? Please present yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Etty Singra. I'm here on behalf of Dave DeLuca. So I did, I sent out a memo, I don't know if you have that, regarding the zoning issue that counsel had just mentioned. I don't know if you want me to review the memo and talk about it a little bit, because...
Please do.
Okay. So I'll just break it down really, try to break it down simply, and then we'll go from there. I have some copies.
Yeah, can I have a copy?
Sure.
I didn't get it, I apologize. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Thank you.
You guys have the same?
Yeah.
And I've got it online too, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, go ahead.
After a thorough review of the statute and latest case law, our legal analysis aligns with counsel Silverman's conclusion. Let me break it down, let me break down the key points for you. Norwood currently has two bylaws that regulate the cannabis establishment. There's a general bylaw that prohibits cannabis establishments broadly, with the exception of a medical use. And then there's the zoning bylaw that specifically regulates medical cannabis facilities through a special permit process. Subsequent to both bylaws, the statute intervenes, the statute that we just spoke about. The statute is superior authority and creates an important exception. It states that a medical cannabis facility that was licensed before July 1st, 2017, can convert to adult-use facility despite local zoning restrictions. The facility in question received this license from the Cannabis Control Commission on December 19th, 2016, which means it falls under this very narrow exception. However, the statute specifically addresses zoning restrictions that attempt to prevent conversion to adult-use facilities. In Norwood's case, the general bylaw is the regulation that broadly prohibits all adult-use cannabis businesses. This created a lot of confusion. A recent case in 2022 helped clarify how this statute operates. The court determined that general bylaws can only block such conversions if they actually function as zoning bylaws. I'm sorry, I'm going to say that again. If they are not actually functioning as zoning bylaws. After carefully reviewing the bylaws, the statute, and case law, we believe Norwood's general bylaw is likely functioning more like a zoning bylaw. This means that the facility at 76 Astor meets the narrow legal exception under the statute that allows it to modify its current medical cannabis license to include adult use. Lastly, I want to emphasize two important points. This is a very specific situation that would only apply to this facility, meaning that the town's existing general bylaw that, that prevents any adult-use cannabis would continue to prevent any other openings, because they wouldn't fill into the exception of being in existence before 2017. Yeah, that's what I have for now, thank you.
Yep.
Let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for the counsel?
Nope.
No.
Thank you, I read the memo. Just for future memos, I like to get into the weeds to read the opinions too, not to question your judgment.
Okay.
But for the next time we look to town council, just throw those in there for me.
Sure.
Um, and some of the things that were talked about earlier, is it your opinion that we could limit this approval to include a restriction against onsite consumption, against delivery, against any footprint expansion of the existing facility, those kinds of restrictions? Would those be permitted under the state requirement allowing for conversion?
I believe they would be permitted, because the state requirement is only, does the blanket statement of like preventing the conversion or modification. It doesn't say what has to be included and what doesn't. I think that's still, that stays up to the board to decide.
Okay, thank you, no further questions right now?
Shannon?
No, nothing right now, thank you.
Al, anything? Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate you being here. Is there anyone here now that would like to speak to this matter, address the board, please? Yes, please, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Greeley, District 6. Couple of questions, one might be through the chair to the, to the attorney.
Sure.
You mentioned that, or I guess the receiver mentioned that this could be upwards of 100 to 200 visits, wasn't the word visits, but patients a day, I guess?
Customers.
Customers, thank you. So, just doing some quick math, if the shop is open for eight hours, that's about 25 round trips per hour. And my question is, compared to that 25, how many, how much do we think today's volume is? And my, my concern through the board, my concern is volume, this is, like, I consider this a neighborhood, it's not, it's on my District 6, but it's still a neighborhood where we have literally hundreds of people working, visiting, there's a kids camp in the adjoining building, and there's a number of, obviously, you know, what could be impacted other users of this industrial park. So my, my questions revolve around anticipated volume. So, I don't know if that's a question that people have an answer for?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
So I think actually, when you look at, I think, the hours that we would...
What are the hours, sir? I'm sorry, what are the hours?
I think, I think we were looking at 9:00 to 11:00. David, can you correct me on that? Was that, if you're there?
So 9:00?
Can you correct that?
9:00 to 11:00, is that right?
It's 8:00 AM to cover the medical patients.
Oh, 8:00, okay.
And then come, come morning.
8:00 AM, okay.
Yeah, so, to 11:00?
Yeah.
To 11:00.
Okay.
Till 11:00, and maybe later if, if we needed, but...
Yeah, so...
So it would spread the customers out, it would not be big slots of customers at any one time, it would be unrecognizable.
Yeah, you, at a peak hour, I would say you might get 20.
Yeah.
But most of the time, you're probably talking 10 to 15, versus, you know, at a peak hour right now, you might see five, something like that.
Do you have a trap? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, is that 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM the current operating hours?
No, I think, David, I think it's a little less than that right now, correct?
Right now, it's 8:00 AM to, I think, 8:00 PM. The medical customers tend to come earlier in the day, and the adult-use customers come later. But that spreads it out, and we think that that's how the business will flow, that's how we adjust our hours, because of how the business flows for rack.
Okay, controls the hours, okay, yeah, I think we can do that, but...
I want to point out that, I want to point out, the adult-use business, 3% of the revenues go back to the jurisdiction, no matter what, a month later than the sales.
No, we get that.
So...
We get that.
Okay.
Okay. Joel, anything else? Go ahead, Joel, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that information.
I, even though I was on the Finance Commission, the 3% is great, but I'm, that's not really my focus. It's more like volume and impact. So in this case, we're looking at volume, potential volume of four times the current rate, roughly, according to what we just heard. So my question, given that, my question is more like impact on the, on the industrial park. You've got Astra Ave, Morgan, you know, that whole, that whole neighborhood, I actually drove there, through there tonight. There's a lot going on, you know, it doesn't go till 11 o'clock, but even, even Home Market across the street has trucking and pickups and deliveries 24/7. So it is, it is an industrial park, it's not, by any stretch, it's not a sleepy industrial park that this would be the only business open. There are other, there's a lot of other activity there. So my, my point to the board, more so to, to the applicant, my, my, I guess my request, you're already doing this, but my request is, just as a reminder about impact and what, you know, if, the fact that, I'm glad to hear that the receiver has not been, that this business has not been in receivership for 11 years, and it's only a couple of years. But to, in my mind, we're already anticipating four times the activity that is present today. So, at some point, this is going to get out of receivership, and that will bring new ownership. And, and that new owner is going to want to make, make money. So if anything, the volume could, could grow even larger than we've already heard this four times growth that's already anticipated. So my, my, I guess my comment and my request to the board is to keep those longer term, even though this, even though we really don't have a lot of skin in the game, because it's, we're more being impacted by the state requirements, et cetera, that the board have some checkback or something that says, okay, a year from now, here's what we thought in 2024, and a year from now, we want the new owner to come before the ZBA or whatever the appropriate committee is, and just say, here's where we are today, there's been a lot more activity, there's been a lot more requirement for police presence and, you know, volume traffic, et cetera. So I just, I just have the fear that this is going to open floodgates in a positive way for the users, but still floodgates for the neighborhood. So that's my only request to the board, is to try to keep those things in mind, which you always do, so.
Good job.
It, it's volume and impact, for me.
Counselor, I'm going to ask everyone to speak, just take notes and...
Sure.
Whatever, you take notes and respond.
Good.
Joel, say?
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, ma'am, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Doyle, I live at 12 Sumner Street. There are three daycares in that industrial park, and the closest one is just around the corner on, just around a block light. I know on the, the medical part of it, you could put them in, and it doesn't have like an impact having the daycares there, but now that they're doing it recreational, is there any state regulation regarding how close they can be to a daycare or a church, because there are several churches in the park? There are also several, like, sports enhancement facilities in the park that kids go to, so does that change the effect for you guys to vote? Because I don't think the state knows that, that, that park, that industrial park, has that many children in it.
That's a good point, we'll ask both counselors, our counsel and the counsel of the applicant. Thank you, Ms. Doyle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Laurie Larson, 22 Thompson Road. My husband works in the industrial park on Astra Avenue. I've been there many times, morning, noon, night, picking up, dropping off, or whatever. I just want to say that I've never seen any security officers outside that building to prohibit the consumption of marijuana on the premises. That particular parking lot is fairly small, and, you know, I don't see, like, I don't see anyone preventing anyone, and I've smelt it, you know, in the parking lot, but that's ever since pot became legalized. I walk around neighborhoods in Norwood or downtown, and even cars driving by, and I smell the whiff of it. So I say, you know, they're not supposed to be using it, driving, and so, but they do, whoever they is. So I'm just concerned about opening it up for recreational use. I understand medical, sure, people need it, and it's great that it's available, but as others have stated, there is daycare there, and it can be very busy during the day with restaurants and other businesses there. So, is there any way to prove or, like, how do we know there's not going to be consumption nearby? That's my concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else, yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Bob Led, District 1, 342 River Ave. I'm a little late to the show, and I'm certainly not an attorney, but this was a ballot question, and the town voted to not have recreational marijuana sold here, only medical recreation. But, and what's the, these people, apparently, we got jammed up on a technicality or something? Is that correct?
That is what our counsel for the town informed us in her decision.
All right.
Their decision, yeah.
But the town did vote, it's funny the way they worded it too, you had to vote, like, yes, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is anyone else here? Yes, ma'am, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, my name is Carolyn Barrows, I'm from 576 Naposet Street. I, I just had two quick questions. The first, it's come up twice tonight, this idea of enforcing zoning and use, and I understand that's not your purview, but my curiosity would be, if there is no stipulation in the zoning approval regarding delivery, then what is recourse, other than the fact that the gentleman said he's not planning on doing it? If, is that binding that he just said it here, or is that something that people would have recourse to do?
Well, if this moves forward, we can certainly condition it that no delivery, we, we have the authority to do that.
Okay.
I think, Michael, I think that they, to do delivery, it has to be approved by the CCC.
Yeah.
And if you violate that, you lose your license.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood then.
I also think that we, as the board, granting this, even if they get it from CDC, we can say no delivery.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, but I'm just saying there's a, there's a higher authority as well.
Okay. And my second question would be about the extended hours. 8:00 PM, I believe, is sort of technic, like, regular business hours. I've never really looked into the business hours of, at medical marijuana places or recreational use marijuana places, but the extended business hours would seem to serve a specific clientele of people, drawing people from outside of the area, being like, hey, that one's open late, we can always go there, right, from all different places. So you're looking beyond Norwood, and I wonder if that, if that changes the dynamic of who's coming in during those specific business hours, that other towns would not have businesses open, and if that is something that needs to be considered? I don't know.
It is, and that's something that we have the authority to limit also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is anyone else here that would like to speak on this matter? Is there anyone at GoToMeeting or Google Meet that would like to speak to this matter? A hearing on similar? Counselor, you've heard a few issues that the citizens have?
So I, I want to clarify, the gentleman who said that, you know, there will be four times the amount of traffic, on a certain level, that may be true. I will tell you, although I don't have any of the traffic information that was used for medical, I can almost guarantee you that the amount we're talking about is probably about the same amount that was assumed for medical, you know, what you're going to see now, because back then, you had a lot of people that became patients that wanted this, and they were, you know, going to be coming to these places. As it turned out, because of recreational, it's much less than that, but I suspect that when you approved this originally, the numbers were, that were anticipated, were much higher, and I don't think it was an issue at that time.
Do you know if there was a traffic study done at that time?
I don't. I, I don't know that offhand. The assertion about security officers outside, we, we monitor this, you know, we, we have cameras all around the parking lot, we do monitor the parking lot. I can't speak to if somebody came by and feels that they smelled, you know, somebody using marijuana. All I can say is what I said before, is we monitor that very closely, and we simply don't allow it. And I, I think that's it, you know, the extended business hours, I'm sure there will be people that come here, we usually view that as a positive, it usually leads to other ancillary benefits.
You speak up, sir?
We usually view, you know, additional business coming in, especially, you know, 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, as being a benefit. You bring in additional people, they use other resources here, convenience stores and such, I don't know why we would assume that that's a problem, to have additional people come in, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
But the gentleman said he didn't think the extended hours is a problem, that's his opinion, certainly not the board's. Okay, yes.
Could you restate?
I'm sorry, go. What, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Diana, could you restate the hours, the proposed hours of operation?
Well, they have proposed hours, this board will set the hours if they deem this to be approved.
Only if it has to be approved?
Yes.
Does it have to be approved?
We're going to talk about it, and maybe even continue this, but, thank you. Okay, got a lot of information to digest. Al, I'll start with you. Any comments or concerns that you may have?
I don't believe they've been quite totally truthful in the information, especially the receiver, that has to be truly concerned, especially when we talk about the profit, the not-for-profit status, and I'm not ready to vote on this tonight, in the affirmative.
Okay, okay. Shannon?
I have another question for both of the attorneys, I think.
Yeah.
I think it was raised, are there the same requirements, if it was a medical facility versus recreational use facility, about its proximity to other uses? And I guess, obviously, if it can be a conversion due to state law... And I guess, obviously, if it can be a conversion due to state law, we can't necessarily move it or require it to move, but if it was starting as a medical or adult use, are there different rules about what it can be sited near?
Generally, they operate under the same rules in terms of-
Just speak louder, counsel.
Generally, they operate under the same rules in terms of buffers. I'm not sure how that's impacted by the fact that you've got an existing medical that may convert to recreational, to be honest with you. It's an interesting question, but I don't have the answer to that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel?
Kind of on that point, I see that in the prior approval, there was, the detailed site plan included site layout, signage, site grading drainage, and site utility plan, and the signage in particular, with respect to location, was already approved, so I would expect there would be no changes or increases in the number, location, or size of signage beyond what was approved in the initial approval?
Is there any plans to change the signage? Like, what does, what's it say on the sign out? Does it say medical only, or?
I believe it says middlesex integrated medicine, medical. It may not say medical, just middlesex integrated medicine, but I don't think there's any plans to change the sign. If there are, obviously, you know, and that's stated as a condition, we would obviously have to come before you again.
Does the CCC have standards with respect to signage content, obviously as a licensing body?
Yeah, you can't have sort of symbols of marijuana on a sign, you know, you can't have lighting on it. We wouldn't be proposing to have neon lighting or that sort of thing anyway, obviously we don't want to become a nuisance, but the regulations are sort of around those types of things, lighting after dark, and no symbols of marijuana on your signage.
And just in relation to the stated concerns about proximity to child-centric uses in the general area, does the CCC either have like time, place, and manner restrictions, or like passage of strict scrutiny standards as to content, as far as, you know, something that would appeal to children that would be in the proximity of any existing signage?
Not really, you know, I think they feel that that's taken care of by the fact that there aren't these sort of symbols of marijuana. Again, if that's some, if the board has a specific concern about, you know, a message being sent, we're happy to talk about that and try to, you know, I would ask the receiver if he has any issue, you know, as long as the name middlesex integrated medicine stays on there, I'm not sure that that would be deemed offensive to anyone, and I'm not sure there are plans to do much more than that. David, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here, we will not change a thing, we don't need any particular signage, we don't need the middlesex integrated medicine, middlesex integrated medicine won't be, it may be middlesex integrated company, we won't change the signs, we won't cater to kids, we won't do anything different. The rules for the proximity to a daycare, we've already been through, we won't change any of that, we'll comply with all the laws. We're not intending to change anything, you will see, it'll be invisible to you to change from medical to medical or act. We want to comply with all the laws, we want to cooperate with every citizen, we don't want to cause anybody trouble or harm, we will comply completely, and on the note of the adult use consumption and the delivery, we will stipulate that we can't do that in our agreement with the city or the town. So, you know, we're not gonna, we're not trying to push new boundaries or anything else, we'll stipulate that we won't do that in our agreement with the city or the town or Norwood.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor?
I just address one matter really quickly.
Yes.
So about the daycares?
Yes.
So in the, so we're here today to just talk about the modification of their special permit.
Mm-hmm.
So in their current permit, their special permit right now, in, there's a land use capacity section that needs to be modified to include the other daycares, because it does include one or two of them, and we were just looking at the map, and there are other daycares in the neighborhood, so that needs to be modified before, the applicant needs to modify that to include the other businesses about the 500-foot distance.
So if one of these daycares is in the 500 feet, where does that leave us?
They, in the, I can review it and get back to, but from what I understand right now is that it was, they allowed it to go forward.
Kind of like grandfathered in?
Kind of, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what happened was some daycare, that one daycare came in after we had licensed her, they knew we were there, and decided to open anyway.
So-
Thank you, sir, thank you.
So it needs to be modified to include the other daycares as well?
Can you also give us an opinion on if, on this land use compatibility, that now that we've had two moved in there, and one is in the 500 feet, can you advise us, a legal opinion on, is it allowed to go forward?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah.
I didn't know about the daycares at all, so I'm gonna get back to you on that.
No, thank you.
But, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rachel, anything else?
No, thank you.
Matt?
No, no questions, Michael.
Okay, I kind of feel, I'm where Al is on this, there's a lot of unanswered questions, a new one just came up, the daycare. I'd like to know, it's in receivership, but at some point, it's going to come out of receivership, what's the ownership structure going to be? I'd like to see a security plan with the Norwood Police on the procedure, if someone comes in there with a fake ID. I will tell you right now, you're not going to get 11 o'clock from me. I know what happens, my father always said he used midnight, but we're in a new world. I know a kid going there nine or 10 o'clock is, is, you know, I remember when I was young, racing at a liquor store, I had a few beers in me, and I shouldn't have been doing it, so you're not going to get that from me, anyway, and I think Joe really brought up a good point. Three times, four times, we don't know, so I would be looking for a traffic study. So those are all the things I would be looking for if this gets continued, but that's where I'm at. So what are the wishes of the board? Do you want to continue this till our next meeting? Do you want to close the public hearing and vote on it? What are the wishes of the board?
Well, you heard my initial statement, but I'm willing to go along with the rest of the board if they're looking to continue.
Okay, that's where I'm at. You guys will?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to get more guidance from Town Council, not to overstep the bounds of our jurisdiction, but I think it would be informative if we received a copy of the host community agreement, which apparently has been executed by the town as well, just to inform kind of the town select board's positions and agreements.
I'm looking for a traffic study, does anyone want to see that, or is that just me? As we, if we should-
The chairman of the town.
If we continue this?
It would be, it would be helpful to get some projections associated with the conversion of use, and I think that would also be helpful for us to understand impacts in terms of hours as well.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and I think specifically that information, I don't think the board is looking to use that to prohibit the use, because our council is advising us that we're required to permit it, but I think those studies and additional information would help inform the appropriate conditions, which we've been advised we're permitted to make as part of this approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We also request from the receiver, an estimated time of conversion?
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to get some information, and I know the council's taking notes on where this is in receiver, and when it comes out of receivership, what type of organization is it going to be? Is it going to be profit, nonprofit? That would be helpful, and-
Estimated when?
An estimate, that sometimes is decided by the court, so, but if you have that, when you feel it might come out, I understand that the courts rule on that, not us, and then the town council, Rachel is looking for, and we'd really like a legal opinion regarding that daycare that opened up after the fact, and what we need to do with it. With all that being said, I'll entertain-
So our daycare is not within 500 feet?
Thank you, we'll get that, thank you, sir, we'll get that legal opinion from our town council, certainly, certainly she'll speak with your counsel, and I know when two lawyers get together, they can somehow figure it out.
Why not?
Okay.
We are in a field.
Our next meeting date in January is, have we said it? We have the, we have the, in our, we have it for January 7th. Is that what you have? Yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing to January 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Matt has made the motion, is there a second? Second by Shannon. Al, to continue?
Yes.
To the 7th of January. Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, if you can get us that information, we'd probably be in a better place, and hopefully move forward. Okay, thank you. The next order of business is 596 Providence, Boston Providence Highway, that was continued from, I don't know where that was continued from.
From October 22nd.
Yeah, two meetings ago, Michael.
Yeah, from October 3rd, was it?
22nd.
October 22nd, yes, and this is case number, okay. Okay, Brian, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Brian Omeida, 1350 Main Street, Walpole, Connor Hilliard, on behalf of the applicant. I certainly don't want to waste the board's time addressing any of the matters that we discussed at the last meeting, so if there are any outstanding questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, and if not, I would propose that I turn the presentation over to Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering to walk the board through some changes that were made to the plan.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I think he's coming up right now with the-
And just for the record, Joanne, Al will be voting on this matter. Al will not be voting, but he will be participating in any comments, if he so chooses to.
Thank you.
Man?
There's a woman.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's very difficult for us to hear what people are saying.
Yep.
So I'm using my outdoor voice.
Yep.
Could everyone please use their outdoor voice?
Yes, Ms. Healy, if everyone could, that is good advice, so your outdoor voice, not your school voice.
Yes.
Matt, your outdoor voice, please, name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Matt Smith, I'm an engineer with Norwood Engineering Company, I'm here to represent the applicant, Mr. David Spiegel. This is the, this is the site next to the existing Enterprise Building, and we're asking the board for approval to build more parking on the adjacent parcel. The last time we were here, we presented this plan, which showed an additional 99 new spaces, in addition to the 86 spaces that would remain on the Enterprise site. We revised the plan to eliminate the parking field that was closest to the neighbors on this part of the site, and keep all the parking as close to Route 1 as possible. We're proposing 68 new spaces, plus the 86 to remain on site, that will give us a total of 154. So last time we saw you, we were proposing 185 spaces, we're now proposing 154. We've presented a plan from KD Turner Architects that shows the proposed plantings along Route 1, and proposed plantings approximately 30 feet away from the neighbor's property to plant some evergreens, some 15 Norway spruce plants. We'd like to get some direction on, from the board, as to whether they're satisfied with this, with this layout, if there's any changes we could make, we'd certainly be happy to hear any suggestions that you have. With me tonight is Alex Craplin from my office, who can put some different plans on the screen for people that are watching via Google Meet, and I believe I also have, yes, I do, I have the property owner, Mr. David Spiegel, on Google Meet, and he will be available to answer any questions that the board would have. So at this point in time, I'd like to open up to any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Smith on the new proposal? Matt?
Not at this point, Mike.
Rachel?
Just to summarize what we're looking at, the main difference in the number of spaces is that, like, lower wing has been removed, and the footprint is otherwise the same for the proposed parking layout?
The parking layout is similar, we've eliminated some of this green space along Route 1 that's far away from the neighbors, mainly we were concerned about the ability to plow that area. We've removed spaces in this location to make it easier and better for the fire truck to turn around, but the main difference is we've gotten rid of, eliminated these 12 spaces closest to the neighbors, and keep this layout closer to the Route 1 ramp.
And then for the landscaping plan, you mentioned planting some addition, you mentioned planting additional evergreen trees, can you provide some explanation how those new plantings will interact with the existing trees? Are the existing trees being modified to plant those?
We put a note to have, to plant the new trees within the existing trees. The nice part of this design is that, and we showed it in the old plan, I didn't show it in this one, but the dark green represents the area that's going to be untouched, we don't have to do any working or reshaping of the land in the dark green area, so the new plantings will go within the dark green area, but we put a note just to intersperse them within the existing planting. So our intention is to not do any cutting within that, this dark green area closer to the neighbors.
Okay, thank you, no more questions right now.
Okay. Shannon?
Yeah, I had a similar line of questions, so does that mean that if you had a dark green area on your newer plan, are you keeping more of the existing wooded area, or are you impacting the same square footage of currently forested area and just replacing more of that?
We would, we would have more wooded area to remain, this area, which is, which we had proposed to put the parking space, the green area would stay, so on this plan, we, it would probably be from about here, that would be, remain wooded, which would be kind of below my pen there, so there'd be, there would also be a lot more wooded area.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Joanne?
My questions are mostly around the purpose of the parking, I know you spoke to that last time, I'm not sure if you would address that now, or if that will be presented.
Yes, we have, definitely representatives from Enterprise that may be able to speak to the issue. For people that didn't hear, the question was to have a discussion on the use of the parking spaces and how the lot will be operated.
Yeah. Are you naming addresses for the record?
Kate O'Neil, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, 405 West Street, West Bridgewater. Hopefully, what we have today answers a lot of the questions you guys had from last time. As far as our car sales goes, our car sales business model is 100 inventory vehicles on the lot. Since we only have a limited number of space, our sales last year averaged at 48 cars a month, however, sales need to be at $100 a month, or, sales need to be at 100 cars per month. To achieve our business model, we need to have those 100 parking spaces. Inventory equals sales volume, which is necessary for this location to be financially viable. Today, we see an, on average, 20 trade-in vehicles per month, which should grow along with the number of sales. We currently have 10 car sales employees from Norwood and the surrounding towns, and as those sales grow, so does our need to hire more. and as those sales grow, so does our need to hire more employees, probably 12 to 15. If you include current trades and our 10 car sales employees, 30 parking spots are accounted for before we even start looking at our inventory spaces. As far as car rental goes, today, we need 35 parking spaces for car rental, however, that should be 50, but since we are currently limited on parking spaces, we cannot grow. Although our rental business runs at a 90-plus percent occupancy rate, we are primarily dealership and insurance replacement, so cars go out into the shop on a Monday, and then they come home on the Friday. Vehicles typically sit over the weekend, then go back out on Monday. The daily rental location has opened up, or, I'm sorry, this daily rental location was opened up to relieve the 896 Providence Highway location of capacity issues. The goal is to shift some of the accounts from 896 to 596 for better customer service and the ability to better manage those accounts. We have the facility to grow and better serve our customers, however, the lack of parking is hindering our growth potential. Today, we have five daily rental employees from Norwood and surrounding towns. As our business grows, so will they need to hire more local employees, and we'll be looking at seven to eight. If you have any questions.
Does that answer your question, Julianne?
Thank you.
Excuse me, you're aware of, and Gary corrected from wrong, any vehicles approved, if this is approved, parked in there, have to have a plate on them, correct?
Correct.
That's correct?
Yeah.
So, you mentioned that you're gonna put an inventory of cars for sale, they don't have plates?
They would go on the existing lot.
Okay, thank you. Al, you have any questions or comments? Matt, why do you have to remove any trees in the green area? Why can't you work from the area that is going to be, if approved, the space for the accessory parking? Why do you have to remove any trees? Why can't you just work from the inside?
Well, we're going to keep as many trees as we can, but we have to do some grading outside of the, of the curbing, just to, just to make it match the existing ground, because we have to make the pavement to slope, at a minimum slope, to drain. So, we do have to change, make the elevation of pavement a little bit different than the existing ground, but we're gonna keep it as close as we can to not touch any of that. So, it's pretty much what you see here is what's gonna end up, so there'll just be a short area of grading and mowing around there, but we're gonna keep it as close as we can to the, to the curbing.
Okay. Gary, do you want to come? Yeah. Thank you, Gary, thank you for being here also.
Mr. Chairman, Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner, just a point of clarity, the special permit is for the accessory parking use. This will still have to go to Planning Board for site plan approval.
Yes.
For buffer, stormwater, et cetera.
Right.
Just to clarify.
Right, yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay, Brian, anything else before you open this up? Do you have any comments at all?
Not unless you have any questions for me, no.
Okay, any questions for the council?
May I follow up with the Enterprise?
Yes, absolutely.
Representative?
Yep, go ahead, Shannon.
Sorry, if I can just clarify, so it sounded like your estimated need is 30 employee parking? Are you able to summarize, because I think what we're really concerned about is, like, parking spaces per use, so if you're able to give us that summary of, like, customer parking versus employee parking versus rental spaces versus sales spaces, that is the helpful indication.
So, the numbers that I have today is that, we currently have our 10 employees. We're, you know, with hopefully the approval of this expansion, we would have a need to hire more. We're looking at probably 12 to 15. Plus, we have, on average, the 20 trade-in vehicles, so that's an additional 20 spots that are accounted for, so.
And those are rentals, or those are-
Those are trade-ins, like a customer is bringing, like, their older car in to buy a newer car.
Got it.
And we have to store it on-site before it gets hauled off, and-
And that would be like a plated vehicle, then, or is that-
I would believe the plates would come off of it when it gets traded in, because I think people usually take those with them.
Okay, so those would fall in the category of storage as opposed to accessory use?
They would have to be in the lot.
Okay. So, we have 20 there, okay, how about sales, number of cars, you said 100?
I mean, that's our goal.
Okay. What do you have today?
It would be-
I'm sorry.
86 existing.
For sale, it's for sales.
Yeah.
Well, that's the total number of spaces on them.
Okay.
Well, that will remain, I have to be a little technical here, right now, there's 91, 90 spaces on the lot right now. But in order to build the driveway going up, we have to eliminate four spaces. So, we go from 90 to four, that's where we get the 86 that will remain on the lot, but that's a total amount of spaces.
Right. So, do you sell cars today from this location?
Yes.
How many do you, on average, sell from this location today?
They averaged last month 48 sales per month, but in order for us to financially stay where we are, we have to be at 100.
I'm just trying to figure out if you can even place all of these vehicles by use in the spaces that they would even be permitted.
It would have to be, they'd have to be plated.
Okay.
They have to be plated.
And then for rental cars, you said you have 35 or so today, with the goal of 50?
Yeah.
Okay. Am I missing any other categories of automobile use? I guess, customer, do you have a rule of thumb of how many spaces you're trying to leave for customer parking?
10, 15? Probably, no, probably 20 between both business lines, I'd say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll open it up, please approach the podium if you'd like to speak, state your name and address, and use your outdoor voice. Yes, just please, come on up, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Eve Hogan, 563 Napontet Street. My neighbors and I have been criticized for being too emotional over this one, so tonight, I'm gonna try and speak not as a homeowner, but as a lawyer. I've been an attorney-in-law professor for over 20 years. I've thoroughly reviewed the Norwood zoning bylaws. Respectfully to Attorney DeLuca, I do not believe there is a pathway through these bylaws that would legitimately allow a commercial parking lot in a single residence or S-zone. At least, no pathway that would not be subject to appeal. Section 3.1.5 of the bylaws contains a table of use regulations that lists what can and cannot exist in a residential zone. There is a Y for yes, N for no. Open lot storage of motor vehicles is an N for no. Leasing of motor vehicles is an N for no. Storage of vehicles for sale or lease is an N for no. Rental or leasing of motor vehicles, N for no. And accessory parking for additional commercial vehicles is an N for no. Even if we were to ignore that table of use regulations, this proposal would have to meet the eight special permit criteria listed in Section 10.4.2 of the bylaws, and the site plan approval standards in 10.5.11. It cannot. The bylaws further require the board to balance whether a proposal is substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood than the current use, and whether the adverse effects of the proposed use outweigh any benefits for the abutting neighborhood and the town. Looking at this proposal holistically, the adverse effects far outweigh any benefits. I do want to address and refute two counterarguments that have been made. The first is that if this proposal is denied, something worse could replace it. The only other uses of right are a single residence, a childcare center, a library, or a museum, all of which would be less objectionable than a commercial parking lot. Better yet, I have identified more than five different conservation grant opportunities, both local and statewide, to purchase the land back from Mr. Spiegel and preserve it as open space for the town. I have offered to write those grants myself and to try and obtain them. This would allow Mr. Spiegel to recoup his costs while doing what is best for Norwood. As far as thinking about alternatives, I ask that we consider the positive opportunities as well as the doom threats. The second counterargument is that we should be protecting a landowner's right to use their property for whatever they wish. This view would render the bylaws and this board meaningless. It is the board's responsibility to review and approve only those proposals that offer more good than harm, not to allow every landowner free rein. In this case, Mr. Spiegel, who is a sophisticated businessman, speculated on a piece of land that was zoned residential when he bought it, and gambled that he would be able to convince the town to rezone it commercial, and that he would be able to persuade a board to grant him a special permit. If he loses that gamble, he has many other investments in his portfolio to make up for it. The role of this board is not to protect private profits, but to ensure the well-being of the community. Mr. Spiegel gambled on a residentially-zoned property, and if he loses, it's his risk, not the town's responsibility, nor is it the town's job to ensure that Enterprise meets its revenue targets. Finally, this decision is irreversible. Once the trees are gone and the land paved over, it's gone forever. The parking lot may be abandoned one day, leaving us with a permanent eyesore. This decision will impact generations, and we have to make the right choice for our town's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would ask that we hold any applause or booing, please. Anyone else that'd like to speak, yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. And we did, just, we did receive an email from Eve Hogan, and thank you for that.
Alex, could you give your packet to, just because I didn't have enough, but, sorry. Gail Ladani, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Gail Ladani, 588 Napontet Street. "I appreciate that Mr. Spiegel and his team have tried to decrease the parking spaces. I want to acknowledge that effort. However, I am here to show you with data and time-stamped photographs that there is no need for a single new parking space, let alone 68. That's all in the packet I gave you, there's photos, it's time-stamped. My phone, I took pictures with my phone, if you want to verify that those are the times I took the photos, I'm happy to show you my phone." So, the day after the last hearing, I started visiting the parking lots of both Enterprise locations on various days, at different times, over the span of several weeks, in order to count the number of empty, available parking spaces. I took photographs, which you now have. I did this over a span of time, so that I could collect reliable averages. Here is what I can report, with proof in the packets I have provided you. On average, the Enterprise parking lot at 596 Boston Providence Highway has 29 empty spaces every day. The second Enterprise location just down the road, at 859 Boston Providence Highway, has an average of 80 empty parking spaces on a daily basis. On the worst day, when the lots are the fullest, there were still 87 open, unused, existing parking spaces available between the two Enterprise lots. On the day when the lots were the emptiest, there were 131 empty spaces. Mr. Spiegel, in his revised plan, has conceded that he can make do with an additional 68 spaces. Those 68 spaces are already there and more. In addition to the 87 to 131 spots that are routinely empty on the Enterprise lots, Mr. Spiegel also owns the Launch parking lot, which has many, many more than 68 spots available at all times. At the last hearing, the idea that Enterprise could use some of those spaces was dismissed because of the likelihood that Launch is entitled to a certain number of spaces in its lease. However, Mr. Spiegel is a party to that lease. He can at least ask for an amendment to use a small fraction of the empty spots, especially since that is exactly what he promised he would do when applying for the special permit to build the Enterprise in the first place. A promise on which the Planning Board relied when Mr. Smith assured them that if the site plan for the building was approved, there would never be further expansion behind the residential homes along Napontet Street. Before we destroy these woods permanently and allow Mr. Spiegel to break his promise to the town, I think it's fair, at least, to explore alternatives, especially the alternative Mr. Smith and Mr. Spiegel themselves told us they would pursue. Even if there is no way to find an additional 68 spots between both Enterprise lots and the Launch lot, there are also plenty of other, already paved, existing lots to store cars. For example, Mr. Spiegel owns 1369 Boston Providence Highway and 1355 Boston Providence Highway, the former sites of Sky Restaurant and Furlongs. Furlongs is a Norwood institution that has been here for 90 years, and that was part of many Norwood residents' childhoods. Mr. Spiegel forced Furlongs out of its space, and what-
We're not talking about Furlongs or Sky?
Can I please finish this?
No.
This is important.
No, because it does not apply to what's before us.
It does apply, if you let me finish.
We're talking about the accessory parking.
Yep, if you let me finish, it will apply.
No one, you don't know if anyone was forced out. Now, we're talking about-
I'll take that out.
Enterprise.
I'll take that out.
Quiet. Quiet.
I'll take it out.
Thank you.
Okay. Take that out, take that out. The Sky Restaurant property, abandoned and unused, and leased their empty parking lots to car dealerships. Go to Sky, and you'll see an entire parking lot filled with Kia vehicles. Instead of doing what is best for the town and its residents, and nurturing local businesses, he did what was best for his own individual pockets, even if it harms this town. He is doing that again here. At least with Furlongs and Sky, the parking lot already exists. He didn't have to cut down trees or ruin a residential neighborhood. If he truly needs more parking spaces, let him continue to use the multiple abandoned, underused property he already owns along Route 1. While they are still eyesores, they are already parking lots. Let him use what he has already ravaged, rather than taking more from our town and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please, approach the podium, state your name and address for the record?
Hi, good evening, I'm Carolyn Burrows, and I'm 576 Napontet Street. I have a very brief statement, but then I actually have some questions I'd like to ask.
Yep.
I'm here tonight to speak out against the proposal to put an active business on the residentially-zoned property on Napontet Street. I was not initially going to make a statement, I usually have a lot of questions, but then I had a conversation with two of the abutting neighbors of this particular project, my across-the-street neighbors, and both neighbors told me that they believed that there was no use in fighting this proposal. They suggested that because Mr. Spiegel has been so generous financially to the town, that we would have no options but to do a little bit of quid pro quo and offer him something back because of his business relationship and risking his financial contributions to the town.
That is not true.
I'm not saying it's true, I'm saying this was my conversation.
And that statement is out of line.
Okay.
Okay, we're here to look at the proposal-
Okay.
-that the city, the town council has said is rightly before us.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm here because I actually don't believe that. I believe firmly in the democratic process. I believe that you folks here tonight are doing your civic duty, and you must be very invested in this town to give up your time to listen to people like me, right, come before you and complain and make offensive statements, I get that, I hear that. And I believe that you believe, and you're deeply invested, in maintaining the integrity of our town and the integrity of our bylaws. I firmly believe that. I'm a history teacher. So, I'm here tonight because I want to believe that when the representatives of the people of Norwood speak and vote, that we, as a town, respect that democratic process. My hope and my challenge for us all is to focus on what the right and best thing for Norwood and the town and the people who live here is. My questions are, I don't know if we-
Excuse me, Brian, please take note of all the questions, because I'm not gonna have you come back and forth. We're gonna hear from everybody, and then the proponent will answer all the questions, so.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so my first one is about fire safety. We all know that this will rest upon a major gas line. So, Matt?
Yes.
You mentioned the fire truck turnaround, so I'm curious, have you guys submitted the plans to the Norwood Fire Department? Have they been approved? Can we see a copy of the approval? And is this lot large enough for a traditional U-turn, or does it require a three-point turn?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask for procedure, would it be best if I answer each question as there's-
If that's easiest for you?
Yeah.
Yes. But in regards to the Fire Department, all town departments received this plan, and to my knowledge- and to my knowledge, no one has commented on it. Usually, if someone's against it, we'll get a note. So, no town department, to this date, has replied back to the Planning Department. Any comments?
So, the...
Site plan approval.
Right.
Yeah.
The Fire Department did reach out to me and let me know that they haven't reviewed the turning radius for the plan this before the ZBA. Any plan that's approved by the ZBA will also go to the Planning Board for site plan approval, and the Fire Department would certainly weigh in at that time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
If I could add, yes, we will have to go to another step, which is the Planning Board, and at the Planning Board, the plan will be reviewed by all town departments. But having said that, this shape of the turnaround is the same shape that we presented when we went to the Planning Board. Now, the Planning Board denied that project, but the town departments had reviewed the design and had no objections to the design. So, the fire truck turnaround is the same that we presented to the town departments when we were at the Planning Board previously.
Which is?
And as we showed that.
U-turn or three-point turn?
It's a, it's a three-point turn.
Three-point turn with cars parked?
No.
With no cars parked?
They've been removed.
They've been removed. And they'll remain removed?
Yes.
I think, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd be very happy to answer the questions, but I need a little bit of time to answer my questions rather than the back and forth.
Yeah, let's wait till the end, because that's appropriate, yep. But just to your point?
Yes, sir.
The cars have been removed, because that was a point that I had at the last hearing, that this can't be. So, all the vehicles have been removed from that Fire Department turnaround area.
Okay. All right. And so, the other question I have, so, I teach in Boston, and we work at a Horace, I work at a Horace man. Relevant because, as a Horace man charter school, we're both in Boston public school systems, and we're our own sort of charter school. And so, we have sort of two feet on both sides, which works really good in our favor, because then we get to be Boston Public for some ways and Horace man for some ways, right? My question is, if we're building a business on a residential lot, are we giving a business two feet in both sides? And I bring this up because originally, there was a fence protecting the neighbors from the property, from the business property, in the original plans, but that's not required on a residential property, right? So, there's no fence here. So, I'm wondering, like, if, when we approve this with a special permit, what rules do we have to follow? Because it's a business on residential land. So, I'm thinking about the fencing, protecting the neighbors, and then I'm also thinking about the lighting. If I wanted to put up and erect a light in my backyard, the height of the lights at the Cadillac dealership, I would not be allowed to do that, because I live in a residential neighborhood. But if I'm a business on a residential neighborhood, do I then have a different type of process? So, what are we giving them by having both feet in two different sides? That's very concerning to me, and brings me back to this idea of the enforcing zoning and use, right? Because you guys approve, but then who enforces? Where do we go for recourse if they don't follow the rules? Because is it business? Is it residential? And the other concern that I had was about this, the licensed or the plated cars in that particular area. If they're plated cars, that's going to be their rental property, right? And I'm curious about returns throughout the night, the 24-hour lockbox. If that is a rental area with plated cars, then what that says to me is they need lights for safety, right? I don't want to be a woman dropping off a car in the middle of the night in a parking lot without very bright lights, feeling safe. So, that would mean to me, they would need the lights on all night. But then we have kids in the houses with their windows going to school the next day, but the lights are on, and now they're not sleeping. So, it just, I think that there's a lot of questions here about what's going to be permitted based on the fact that this is now being done in a residential area. Those are my questions.
Okay, we'll make sure those all get addressed. I have my notes here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to these? Yes, please, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Cheryl Doyle, 12 Summender Street, and I'm also a Town Meeting member in District 6, but I'm going to support District 9. Just to let you guys know something, we had an issue down on Carnegie Row, and they had gone before the Planning Board, because it's an open lot storage. So, back in January '22 of this year, it was presented before planning. Planning ruled on it that they had six months to clear out all the vehicles by August 31st off that lot. Those vehicles are still on the lot. In fact, the day after planning had ruled, they brought in the shipping containers and started piling those up. At the time, Attorney Alameda said, oh, there's only like five, six cars or 15 cars that are loaded on a regular basis. There's constantly cars unloaded with the car trailers on Carnegie Row that drive up on the lawn and everything else. And it's actually a hazard, it's dangerous. But to this day, it was basically, they snubbed their nose at the Planning Board, and there's still parking vehicles there on that open lot. What makes anybody think they're not going to snub at you guys or the Planning Board or anybody else? Nothing has been done about it. It's all been reported that it's past the date, but nothing's been done. I feel bad for District 9 and that neighborhood, that they're not going to have any recourse. And also, at Town Meeting, we voted for that strip of land to be residential. There's a reason. And then the town's also wanting, they're talking about taxing the residents for our roofs and our driveways, because we have an issue with flooding. But yet, we're going to cut down trees and pave? Is that really, really fair to the residents of this town who actually have stake in it? We've bought our houses, we pay our taxes, and yet, here's another commercial development going to pave over a lot, and there's no recourse. There's going to be flooding. There's zero recourse. So, while you guys make the decision, please just keep in fact that the residents should always first and foremost, should come first over commercial development. Thank you.
And we'll follow up with the Building Inspector on 12 Carnegie Row. Thank you. Next, if anyone would like to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Craig Ricky, 585 Napontet Street.
And I'll note, we've received a letter from Mr. Ricky. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I'm a Town Meeting member, District 8. So, one of the purposes of this board is to protect the health and safety of its inhabitants, Town of Norwood, and that would, I would imagine, include the daytime employees of this business. One of the things in Section 2.4 talks about split lots, and that when you have a split lot, that the purpose of each section has to comport to that section. So, residential has to stay residential, and Boston Providence Highway has certain privileges, which one of them is to go from one business to another business from side lots. That doesn't pertain to residential. And this lot, or a series of lots, do not have any accessible access from Route 1 or Napontet Street. The only way they can get to those properties is through the Boston Providence Highway, and that doesn't extend into a residential neighborhood. Looking at this new design, the fire trucks would have to pass over a pipeline. The pipeline, this section of the pipeline is three and a half miles long from where it starts to where it ends over on Pleasant Street. That's three and a half, three and a half miles of fuel, and would take over six hours to vent. And if it ignites, that's going to burn down this whole neighborhood. It doesn't really matter if it's a three-point turn or a U-turn, because the first responders, if they drive in there and there's an incident, they're trapped. And we're talking about first responder's life, and the last fire truck Norwood bought cost $1.1 million. Right now, that section is, has an intact ecosystem, and it's going to be cut down and replaced with a artificial stormwater system, for no reason, really, other than just to park some cars. And when we're talking about this project being reviewed by the Fire Department or other departments, previously on Phase 1 of this, a fence was erected, it was approved and erected, it's eight feet tall, and it prevents, as you drive down Route, or down Napontet Street, you cross over this pipeline. And if there's a rupture there, four houses are cut off, and there's no way for those residents to escape because of that wall. They're trapped. They'd be dead. So, I don't know who reviewed that. At any point along that pipeline, it's a 362-foot evacuation zone, and I don't see that anywhere on this. If you didn't hear that from me, who's telling you this? If you don't know, you don't know.
Well, I know. I used to work for National Credit.
Well, thank you. In June of 2022, Mr. Smith, talking to the Planning Board and Mr. Sheehan, said that they didn't have the ability to park on residential zoned property, and that's why they didn't do it. And they would, the alternate would have been the Launch site. And once it went into the Boston Providence Highway, they decided to move into our neighborhood. This is not accessory parking. Representatives of Enterprise said on tape that it was essential to them that without it, without 200 parking spaces, they couldn't do business here. This is a four-acre or less lot combined with what's there now and what's to be expanded. And the town manager has said the average dealership in Norwood is between six and eight. So, already, they're down two acres, and they're going to be splitting at the seams as soon as they expand. This business has been in Norwood four different locations in 20 years. I don't think they're going to be at this location three years from now. And this neighborhood has taken 70 years from the time they built the rotary and put the gas line in. It's taken 70 years to get to where it is now. As others have mentioned, rental and leasing is not allowed in residential zoned areas. One section, in Section D, it says motor vehicle open lot sales are disallowed. It doesn't say anything about storage. Motor vehicle open lot sales are disallowed. When the Boston Providence Highway District was done a couple of years ago, it was resented by the town planner at the time as benefiting the town by reducing conflicts between the business owners along Route 1 and the neighborhoods. That's not happening here. It was supposed to expand green areas. This is destroying green areas. And it was supposed to reduce the heat sink effect from asphalt parking lots. This is paving over our neighborhood. This project fails on so many levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else you'd like to speak? Yes, please approach, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Stacy Crowe, 733 Napontet, and Town Meeting member, District 9. You've already heard me speak about how I love this neighborhood and would like to see it preserved. For those of you who've spent time on Route 1, especially during business hours, you can appreciate a lot of the traffic that we have to deal with bumper-to-bumper for hours in the morning, left and right. As you've already seen, there seems to be plenty of spaces at the moment for this Enterprise lot, but to the extent that Enterprise actually intends to more than double their sales business and further increase their business, I actually worry about the traffic implications. If you have been to this Enterprise lot, you'll see it's a quick, sharp entrance, just as you're trying to get off the ramp of the rotary, for example. There's no easy access the other way. You're accessing it from the airport side potentially or other things. So, I think that's going to have a lot of implications for the traffic patterns, and so I think additionally, thinking about a traffic study or what that kind of growth in that neighborhood encroaching on our residential area and will further due to the traffic patterns should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, just approach the, yes, sir, approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
William Booker, 733 Napontet Street, Town Meeting member, District 9. I think, though people can be accused of having excessive amounts of emotion over this, I think it's important to know that everyone in the neighborhood who's heard this plan basically has been reviled by it. This will transform the basic architecture of a neighborhood. And certainly, Mr. Spiegel has invested his money in this business, but these are people that have invested their lives, and in my mind, there's no comparison. So, I just ask that you guys think about how this is radically altering that community that so many people invested in and built over something as trivial as a parking lot. And if you question why people have emotion, that's the issue, and that's why it's caused such rancor in this community. It didn't take me any effort. I heard two seconds of this, and we submitted the petition that you guys saw at the last meeting. We were getting people to sign who don't even live near there. They live a half a mile away. They heard two seconds of this, and we had their name on that paper. So, just think about that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, just approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Stella, yes?
I think I just cut in line. I'm Steve Kenech from 3 Harrow Road in Norwood. I'm also a Town Meeting member, District 4, and I don't have any skin in this game, but I'm just here to support my neighbors that live on Napontet Street. I've been by that property quite a few times, and I just think it's a shame to ruin their neighborhood to put in a parking lot. I know that I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood. I wouldn't want somebody to all of a sudden decide that we're going to put in a parking lot or big lights or anything else in my neighborhood, and I just think it would be a shame to do that. It's a residential neighborhood, and it should stay residential. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Stella?
Thank you. Jean Farrar Taylor, District 8. I'm here as a Town Meeting member, and I'm here to support the neighbors, even though I'm from District 8, and that's District 9, because I was at Town Meeting. And for 30-something years, I've sat at Town Meeting, and we vote, and we listen, and then this happens. We end up, and you people have to sit in front and listen to all of this, but I just wanted to support them, and it does get a little tiring to have to continue to come back, but please take into consideration the time that was taken at Town Meeting and why we kept this residential and made it residential. They've said it all. I don't have to say it again, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stella.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please? We'll call on Google Meet, yep, Ms. Holman?
Homewood.
Homewood. It's been a long night.
I don't have anything but an outside voice. Questions?
Name and address for the record, Deb.
Oh, sorry, Debbie Homewood, 49 Beach Street. I'm going to ask you and then they'll answer the questions, Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to just, they take your answer.
I'd like to know how many parking spots that the lease says that they, Enterprise, has? What did they take for parking spots when they signed their lease? The number of spots now is 90 and I got to ask Matt, but is this the same plan as the last one we saw?
No, the plan on the left is the previous plan.
And how many spots was that?
99. The one that went before your board a few years ago was 144. This is 99 and now they're down to 68, the one on the right. That's the plan.
So that was the plan that we're in? No?
That, the plan on the left there is the plan that was presented at the last meeting. The plan on the right is the plan we're looking at and talking about and voting on possibly tonight.
And the one that we're on appeal for, we don't have any?
Correct. This, this plan that was originally presented to the ZBA as a reduced number of parking spots from what the planning board reviewed.
Okay. Can you tell me how many spots we, the one that's on appeal was?
144, I believe.
Okay.
I can confirm that.
I couldn't find my book.
That's about right.
So, does the A criteria, which is what the planning board kind of hung their hat on, I want to go back to, I want to state that all property owners have a right to use their property. I know this gets emotional for everybody and we as boards or town people have to live by the rules. Doesn't always make everybody happy, but we have those rules. BPH was something that I think can all, I think we all tried to try to clean that up because for years, we've all been asked to make decisions that this one bleeds into that one and it didn't make any sense. And for years, we've said we need to clean up Boston-Providence Highway. I think we did that in good faith, both because the business owners drive our economy, we like our businesses, they pay twice, over twice the taxes. And the Boston-Providence Highway overlay, am I saying that right? Overlay was something to try to clean it up.
It's not an overlay.
Business work and the residential's work we had. So there was a lot of work put into that and the first thing that came in front of us was Enterprise. And if our legal counsel can't figure it out, I'm not going to be able to figure it out. I can't, I don't know what the difference is between, we're coming in front of the planning board asking for a different plan. Do you go by the A criteria also?
When it came before the planning board, it was under the Boston-Providence Highway District that was created by Town Meeting. That did not allow for open lot storage, therefore it was denied through your vote. When it got changed back to residential, ours only allows accessory parking of residential district that abuts a commercial district. That's the only reason it's here. If it had stayed as Boston-Providence Highway, we would not even be here.
Well, okay, okay, but we can't unring that bell as overused as that is.
We can't unring that bell. No. We can't unring that bell. I wish we could. I'd be at the Bruins game.
So this was the same number of parking spots now? Again, I would like, I can't figure out what the difference is between what you have to do, does the planning, does the zoning board have to live by the A criteria, which was one of the things?
The special permit criteria are the same for the zoning board and for the planning board. And, but they're, the site plan review criteria are a little bit different from the special permit criteria.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, please, no, you've already spoken this time at the end because it's, we're getting late and we have to leave here at 10 o'clock.
You just said something that I don't understand.
Let's, I'll let the building inspector, the town council correct me, or council for the, you've already spoken, ma'am? Anyone that hasn't spoken, please, I want to hear from everyone and we're very limited on time. So if you haven't spoken yet, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Logan Joe Greeley, District Six, Town Meeting Member. Thank you, thank you for the chance to hear this. I wasn't all that familiar with the history, the history of this, but I can obviously tell that there has been a history. In spite of the fact that this is a different, it's a different property, but I live on the Saint Streets and right at the end of the Saint Streets, at the end of Saint John, Saint Joe and Saint Paul, is now the Cooper Park. And the Cooper Park shares a very comparable history. And I'm not saying that this property that we're talking about on Boston-Providence Highway could be the Cooper property, but originally, the Saint Street Lot, as it was originally known, was going to be the home for 350 storage vehicles. And the neighborhood, everybody, basically anybody in town, literally there were dozens of meetings, literally hundreds of people showed up supporting each other, neighborhoods, supporting neighborhoods. But it was, the bottom line is that was the wrong location for that type of use. I've been in most of these backyards on Napaunset Street by invitation. I wasn't, you know, by invitation. But I had a couple of, three items that had not been, that I haven't heard brought up tonight. Number one, and there's three items besides the whole residential thing. Number one, just looking, standing in the backyards, looking towards Route One, it would appear that most of the trees, both in the private property and on Mr. Spiegel's property, my guess is those trees would be 50 to 75, maybe even older number of years old. So my first question, I didn't hear this specifically, but the first question that I would ask the board to review is, I heard the fact that evergreens would be planted, that's great, but are they, you know, are they two-footers or are they Christmas trees or, you know, what, how much buffer and how much protection will those allow to the neighborhood? So that's number one. I don't need an answer, but I'm sure that's somewhere in the design, I would hope. So that's number one. The second thing I heard tonight was the fact that there would be regrading on this property to allow for the adequate spacing and the adequate slope of the parking lot. But because the part, the, the property right now slopes towards the neighborhood anyway, any regrading, in my mind, would possibly make it worse as far as flooding in the neighborhood. It's already, I can't tell you if there is or is not flooding today, but you can, if you just stand on Route One and look towards the neighborhood, it's easily, it's easy to identify the fact that the slope and therefore the rain runoff, et cetera, goes towards the neighborhood. My fear is that if there's going to be regrading, then that'll just make it worse. The third item, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have this, you know, scientifically gauged, but just points, points, more than just points the pointer. The third issue that I see, as opposed to the Enterprise Lot down the street, like five, seven, eight, whatever the number is on Boston-Providence Highway, the larger lot, in my mind, that lot has a lot more through, you know, drive-through capability. So you could pull a car carrier or a truck carrier through into the lot off the Boston-Providence Highway and out of the neighborhood into that lot. So it's kind of self-contained. But I don't see this potential, if, if there's even debate on whether or not you can turn a fire truck around on this new, on this 596, it's a guarantee that you can't drive a car carrier onto this property, which would mean in my mind, just looking at the map, that the only place, the only logical place for a car carrier to park is on Access Row. And, and with the throughput, I didn't, I didn't take note of the car, the vehicle throughput, but my guess is those car carriers would show up on the front doorstep at least three days, three times a week. And that's just a guess, doing some math. So to me, the question is where are those going to reside, both before, during and after delivery or pickup, whichever way it goes?
It won't allow it.
Okay.
If this, you know, it can be a condition.
Right. So you're, so you're basically, with the throughput that we heard, some of the numbers on turnover of vehicles, you can't, unless somebody is going to physically drive the vehicles to get them onto the lot, there's no other logical way to get them there other than car carriers? So, and I'm sure there's an answer for this, but just, again, thought.
Thank you.
Items to think of. But right now, I did look at the, at the hours of, hours of operation, it's 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM most days. So just the fact that they're, they're not open for business until 10, that's the posted time that they're open, but whether or not they can accept either deliveries or shipments of vehicles before, during and after, that's, to me, that's, that's just another point about throughput and volume and neighborhoods. Just as I spoke on the previous topic in the previous hearing, to me, it's, it's impact on the neighborhood and its volume and is, are either, either of those two topics appropriate for this neighborhood? And to me, the answer is no.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go to, go to Google Meet. Is there anyone on Google Meet that wants to address the board on this matter? Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Brody is at the top of our list. Do you want to go ahead?
Steve, go ahead.
Steve Brody, 102 Devon Road, and also Town Meeting Member, District Four. The Norwoodus extension is requested. This is residential. Now, I believe that we were misled at the Town Meeting and approved the Boston-Providence Highway zoning district. We were told by the Town Planner that all affected above us were notified about the Boston-Providence Highway zoning. We found out later that that was not the case. The people who lived on Napaunset Speed Extension and affected by this new zoning and changing that residential area to commercial were not notified. They were not even aware of this new zoning. Now, I've been on that Napaunset Speed Extension and I have seen the area. Now also, I have heard before this meeting that there is a gas line under this property. The construction era could be catastrophic to the town of Norwood. I really hope that the zoning board of affairs takes this gas line under this residential property into consideration. There should be no, no additional parking allowed in that area.
Thank you. Anyone else on Google?
The neighborhood needs the trees to help isolate them from the highway. And please, do the right thing, keep this property residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else on Google Meet?
Frank Adams is next.
Mr. Adams, state your name and address for the record, please. Mr. Adams?
It looks like you're muted.
Frank Adams, 3 Bellmapp Road, Town Meeting Member, District Nine. I think it's absurd to, to consider even the possibilities that storing vehicles is not an essential component to a regular vehicle operation. I don't know how the board could even consider that. But something that we haven't discussed, but maybe is worth mentioning, is the interest to the town. When we look at tax revenue, an additional parking lot generates zero additional tax revenue. However, we do have to consider, and I think this board should consider, the possible need for tax abatement. In fact, I'd say likely need for tax abatement by the neighbors due to this project. And I think we may end up with, with a net loss in revenue in addition to destroying a neighborhood in Norwood. And I just don't think that this board can, can in good conscience make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Google Meet?
Jim Kirkker.
Jim Kirkker, please.
Hi, yeah, I actually raised my hand this time. Yeah, I'm just curious, was any kind of an environmental study done when these plans were made, cutting down trees that are that old and replacing them with some evergreens and stuff? That doesn't work. It doesn't work that way, folks. And we really, in this day and age, cutting down buffers and cutting down old trees to put up more tar, put down more tar and stuff, just doesn't make any sense at all. It makes no sense at all environmentally. So I'm just curious if an environmental study had been done? And I'm also curious as to what, I'm hearing about this gas spike now for the first thing, that's a little scary. But also, that part of town is, has a lot of flooding, as I recall. Is that, am I right about that? I'm new in Norwood, I've been here about a year and a half. So, but there's a lot of flooding that goes on in Norwood, correct?
We'll, we'll have the proponent address that. What's your address, sir?
Oh, sorry, 128 Bill Street.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on Google Meet that would like?
I'm curious about that.
The proponent, the proponent will answer the questions. I've got a long list and they've kept you on the list, so your question will be answered. Anyone else on Google Meet that would like to address this matter? Hearing none. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Almeida, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry. Rachel, yes?
Just to help me as you're summarizing the responses, outside voice, mom voice, whatever you want to call it, sorry. For me, I think putting aside the narrow path that Town Council has identified exists under accessory use and storage, you know, that kind of wonky that I think the board understands. But, but looking at this as the criteria of granting a special permit, could you please specify why, other than reduction in the number of parking, this board should weigh and consider and balance those criteria differently than the same criteria that the planning board made a determination under a more permissive zoning district in, when it was under the Boston-Providence Highway District versus the residential district? Because the criteria that we're looking at is the same. So I'd appreciate kind of that summary too, as you're responding to the general questions.
Sure. So I, I think I respectfully disagree about the reason that the, this, or the prior iteration of this application that was more than double the amount of parking that we're asking for today. And I think that's extremely relevant to the difference. It's less than half of the amount that we were asking for in front of the planning board. But I think more essentially, looking at the history, the proceedings before the planning board were much more about the 100-foot restriction that the Boston-Providence Highway District is subject to. The board felt strongly that if the 100-foot applied and the property, the parking needed to be set back from Route One by 100 feet, it would therefore be that much closer to the neighbors and therefore a more intense use. So I think that's essential in trying to distinguish between the outcome that we're asking for from this board and the outcome before the planning board, is that much of the discussion and the angst amongst the planning board, and it was a three to two vote denying it, was centered around the 100-foot restriction, which this property is no longer subject to because it's now in a residential district. So I think that's an essential note.
Through you, Mr. Chair? If I may, I just want to clarify that the 100-foot restriction that's being referred to is that within the Boston-Providence Highway zoning, parking is not allowed within the first 100 feet. And so much of the discussion that was before the planning board focused, and, and so having the parking closer to the on-ramp and further away from the neighbors was actually the thing that triggered the need for the special permit to be reviewed by the planning board. If it had been closer to the neighbors and further away from the on-ramp, it would have been able to go forward as of right.
Correct. And I think that's an essential distinction in comparing essentially apples to oranges with respect to these two different special permits.
Thank you.
If that helps, Rachel?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. You've got your list and if you missed anything, I'll get back to you, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that a lot of what was raised was, a lot of the matters that we addressed at the previous meeting. And I think also a lot of the issues with respect to lighting and fencing and drainage are all matters that are more properly addressed before the planning board on-site plan review. And I think that's essential as well, is that this is merely seeking approval for the use and not getting into sort of the nitty-gritty of the plan. I think that the plan is more to explain I think that the plan is more to explain to the board how the use would be carried out. And I think that diving into all those nuances that have been raised, I think probably goes beyond the scope of.
Now, just to that point, you know, if this was granted, we can condition it. And many of these things that came up, we can condition. And I know it's going to go to the planning board for site plan review. So, I really think you should. So, I'm going to read my list.
Sure.
Okay. The lease with launch, please explain why you cannot park any cars over there. And I know it also, you might not know this, but I do, that there was a special permit for launch that had a certain number of parking spots. But I know there's a lease. Please explain why they can't use that. I think that's what the question was.
Sure. I think, I think first, to your point, you're, you're correct as to the restrictions on, on the use of the parking as a zoning approval matter. But also, the lease with launch is of, I think, a significant duration. I'm not sure of the exact duration, but they're promised a certain number of spots. And essentially, they have none to spare with respect to the lease.
Excuse me?
But, but it was an option that was explored even as recently as the meetings that predated this application with the zoning and planning departments. So, it was looked into and it's simply not an option.
Okay. I, I know that the fire safety issues and the turnaround will be reviewed by the planning board. But please explain how this plan changes that makes it, in your opinion, makes it clearer for the fire trucks to turn around?
Yes. Previously, we did have some spaces in this area to the left of the plan. So, the fire truck would have to maneuver. There was some open space, but the fire truck would have to maneuver near some parking spaces. Now, we've removed all of the parking spaces from this part of the parking lot to the left of the plan. So, it's an improvement on what we first submitted you in improvement compared to what was presented to the plan.
Okay. I'm going to hold fencing, lighting, trees to the end. Enforcement, the question was. Anything in, in the town, be it residential or commercial, is enforced by the building inspector? If anyone needs further clarification from the building inspector, he is here. Split lots and, and the pipeline, 2.4 does not apply in this case. And in regards to the pipeline, that pipeline runs under the Ponsett Street also. And there's trucks going down the Ponsett Street. I live off of the Ponsett Street. I know all the traffic issues that you people know. So, certainly, it's a concern. But there's steps in place that they need to take. They have to apply with. Is that Tennessee gas line or, it would go through National Grid?
Yeah. I, I, I forget the name of the company, sir. But we did have to apply the, to, the project had to apply to one of the.
To National Grid. It's National Grid, but it's a Tennessee, I think it's a Tennessee pipeline. Elgonquid, yeah, Elgonquid. So, they would, they would have to come out and they would review everything. And I know that from the years I spent in National Grid. That was actually my job. So, that certainly is not going to happen nilly-willy on this project. I think this addresses a question, and I think this lady wanted to talk. And Gary, I'm going to ask you to address this. And I know it's a concern. I had mentioned it when this was Boston Providence Highway, how this would not be before us, and we talked about the 100-foot rule. And now, why is this properly before us this evening? Because I think that was a question that was had over here. I thought I explained it, but you could probably do a better job.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, this comes down to what the proposed use and submitted use by the applicant was. And it is for accessory parking. It is not for open lot storage. And there is, there is a dramatic difference. Everybody here, mostly, unless they walked, drove here in a vehicle that's registered in the state of Massachusetts. It's outside. It's parked. Vehicles that are not registered, that are for sale, are stored. That's, that's, it may seem like it's an overly simplified definition, but that's it. We have two use tables. One is for accessory use, which details sales, et cetera. We have, you know, sales of motor vehicles, leasing of motor vehicles, and storage of vehicles, all addressed elsewhere in, in the, the use tables. Accessory parking has its own use table. This is, and so, it matters. It matters what you're doing, what the proposed use is, is on that particular parcel. And it is accessory parking in a residential district, which is allowed by special permit, per our bylaw, for use on an adjacent parcel that's commercial. That's his, and it's, it's, it's in black and white. And it's not my determination, it's, my determination is based on what the bylaw says. It's not an opinion. I read the bylaw. I consider what the applicant is proposing. And they're held to that. That's why it's documented. So, if for some reason, whatever happens here, if it's approved and that lot is created and we drive by or someone sees or observes cars that are not registered, that are for sale, like we see all up and down the auto mile, that would be open lot storage. That would be a violation. It would be reported to me. I would investigate. And if it's found out, then it would be a notice of violation and a fine would be issued.
And the fine is $300?
$300 per violation per day.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other?
That's all. But I have, well, the building inspector's here. Does anyone have anything for the building inspector?
The per violation, would each individual vehicle be an independent violation?
The violation would be for violation of use. So, if it's storage of vehicles on a particular lot, that would be one violation. So, whether it's one vehicle that, that is stored on the lot or 100, it's, it's one violation. But each date exists would constitute a separate violation.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for the building inspector?
Thank you, Gary. I think to Brian or to Matt, a question came up, traffic access. Okay. How are they entering? How are they exiting? If this does go forward, there will definitely be a condition on car carriers not being, go ahead, Brian.
I can address that. Just speaking to Enterprise when that question was asked, there are no car carriers.
Okay.
It's a business that relies on somebody bringing a vehicle to sell to Enterprise to purchase a vehicle. It's sort of a, a one-for-one sort of transaction with respect to vehicles. There, there are no car carriers, nothing of this sort. They're not getting shipments of vehicles.
Okay. So, while you're there, there was a question on hours. What are the hours?
8:00 AM.
So, car rent, daily rental is 7:30 to 6:00, Monday to Friday, Saturdays. I think it's either 9:00 to noon or 9:00 to 1:00. It might have just changed. And then, they're closed on Sundays. Car sales is 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay. I'm more concerned about the rentals, right? Because that's what, they have to be plated.
Correct.
Can anyone go in there at 7:00 o'clock at night and get a car?
Not to rent, no.
No.
No, we close, they drop it off.
No. Can anyone?
Yeah.
Please.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yes, come up and state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Doug Valeri, 405 West Street, Westbridge Water Mass.
Yep.
So, there is a covered canopy underneath the existing building. And, and under that canopy, there is a key drop box next to the door. So, customers pull up to the building underneath the canopy, drop the keys, and then they leave. That light is on by motion sensor. So, unless somebody is going into that bay, there's no light underneath that. It'll turn on and turn off just for safety for the customer.
So, I come in at, at 9:00 o'clock at night with a rental car?
Yep.
I pull in there, I drop the key, and I leave it there?
Correct.
But if someone comes in behind me, where do they leave the car?
There's a couple spaces underneath the canopy.
And this is all on the existing property?
On the existing property, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, traffic access was a question that came up.
Yes. Currently, the cars can access the existing building either by coming down the ramp, the North Baum ramp to Route 1 and making the right into the, where the Savers Launch building is, and then making the way through the parking lot and then, then into the Enterprise site. They can also come in off of Access Road. So, all cars entering the site will come the same way that they come now. From the existing site, they will go up one aisle in this direction. But everything will enter, enter the site in the same way that the current building gets the vehicles.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Homewood had a question about the lease.
That's proprietary. I'm not going to talk about the lease.
Just, can you give us how long the lease is for?
It's a 20 years.
20 years, okay. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Homewood. What was your question?
I was wondering how many cars they thought they were getting with the lease when they leased out the building.
Can you address that or?
It's proprietary. I don't have the lease in front of me. I don't know that I have it on my hand. I know it's by area.
Okay. But it is a 20-year lease?
It is a 20 years.
In regards to the trees that Joe Greeley brought up, we do have a tree warden. So, we certainly can condition this to have the tree warden get a, go notify or get a permit from the tree warden. I think it's Mark Ryan. And we can, we can limit not so much the age of the trees, but the, the inches of the trees. What is it?
Caliper.
Caliper of the tree. And we can certainly condition it at a certain caliper that they cannot remove. Just wanted, that was Joe Greeley's question.
I can tell you the diameter.
Yeah, if I, yeah, I can, let me address that in a couple ways. Okay, as far as the trees, yes, there is a, there is a CONCON regulation that says that we measure the cross-sectional area of each tree. And within a certain area between the 25 and 100-foot buffer zone, we're only allowed to remove 50% of those. So, that's within the 100-foot buffer, buffer zone in this location. As far as the tree cutting and the environmental impact, this zone does allow for, have as little as 25% green space. And this plan shows 59% green space, almost 60% green space. So, we're providing a, a large amount more green space than, than the zoning would allow. In general, the zoning would allow us to cover 75% of a, of a lot in this zone with pavement. We're only proposing about 40%, so that is the amount. As far as the tree warden, I, I'm not totally familiar with the regulations, but I think that has more to do with, with cutting trees on right-of-way. I believe if there's a big tree right in the middle of where we want our parking lot, I, I don't know that there's jurisdiction that that could be presented.
Well, we have jurisdiction that we can make if this, that's approved, a condition of the special permit.
Yeah, you could, but I wouldn't, you know.
Well, that's, that's up to us.
Well, no, I, I know it is. I mean, you certainly have the jurisdiction and you have the, the ability. But I just don't know how that would work. If you can, if you conditioned, I don't know, no 12-inch trees can be cut, then.
Without approval of the tree warden. Well, go on. I just wanted to address, I just, we're running out of time here, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
We're running out of time here.
I'm practicing what I preach. I'm going to let the lawyers do the lawyering on that, on that point.
We talked about no car carriers. And then, okay, those were all the questions that I, people had that want to address. Brian, why don't you come up and I'll start with Matt. Any questions?
Yeah, I just, so, so how long have you been open?
2019, 2020, I think.
And, and, and how much have you grown since then to today?
I, I don't, we're, we're the real estate folks. We, they're operating, they don't, they don't attend the meetings. I don't know what the actual growth rate is. I don't have those numbers.
Yep, Mr. Palatia.
The building was granted a certificate of occupancy since I've been here. I've been here just over two years.
Okay. Matt, anything else?
No. I mean, it, it, what I'm trying to get to is, what's your growth plan going forward? Because you're asking for a lot of spaces and you currently have a lot of vacant spaces. And I'm not sure that there's a need for us to make a decision affirmatively when you're not occupying the spaces that you currently have. And it's been, how many years? Five years?
Well, I think respectfully, we dispute the notion that the spaces are vacant, notwithstanding the.
Notwithstanding the, the evidence.
Scientific block. I haven't seen it. I can't really weigh in on it. But, but what I can say is, I guess I'll let Doug address that.
So, our vehicles go out and they come back. So, when they, when they go out and they're rented, there's going to be empty spots. So, when they come back, that's where we need the spots.
Yeah, understood, understood.
There is a, during COVID, there was a massive shutdown for, on vehicles, on building vehicles. We're still seeing that. We're still struggling to get vehicles. We haven't made up our entire flow of business yet. The 100 spaces that Kate spoke to earlier is needed for us to grow to our potential and lead our business model.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything, anything else, Matt?
Oh, good.
I'd like to point out.
You're fine. I think it's, this gentleman answered your question.
I'm good, but if you, you want to add?
We're, we're running short here, folks, because it's 10:00. And we've got another matter after this. So, and I'm not trying to shut anyone off. I, I'm not sure if this is going to get voted on tonight. So, but that'll be up to my board, the board here. But Rachel?
I, I just, I'm, I'm looking at our criteria. I think you've provided your position, why we should review it differently than the planning board and the different, the different aspects that they were reviewing in their review under that zoning regime that no longer applies. Did you want to speak specifically why those elements are met? I think we've heard a lot about the desired business model and objective that have developed since the building has been built before any permitting application. But can you speak as to why we should find that each of those criteria are materially satisfied?
Yes. So, with respect to the social and economic impact, I think what I prefaced at the beginning of my first presentation at the original meeting was that based on this property being residential, back to Boston Providence Highway, along with the accompanying lot, and now this lot alone being shifted back to residential, it's created a situation where this lot is incredibly difficult to develop in any way other than the way that we've presented it here, where it's sort of infeasible to have a single-family home built immediately next to what now exists as an enterprise rental car business. And with respect to traffic, there's no real discernible impact given that it's really just reallocating the vehicles within the site. With respect to the current and new utilities, a no, no net impact. Concerning the environment, as Matt, I think, most succinctly summed up, the requirement is for 25%?
Green space.
Green space, and this lot has 50, this plan?
59.
59%. So, that's essentially 2.5 times the amount of green space that would be allowed as a matter of right. So, essentially, if we were to develop this parcel in, in any of the manners that Ms. Hogan described as a matter of right, and I think it's important to note that we're comparing the uses as a matter of right to this proposed use, we're giving 2.5 times more green space than would otherwise be required under the bylaw. With respect to the current use of the subject parcel, it's unused. I certainly understand, and I think this plan appreciates the value of the green space and it preserves as much of it as possible. And again, more than double the amount that would be required. In terms of visual compatibility, I know that I'm probably going to hear from the neighborhood on this. But as one speaker mentioned tonight, the, the nature of the Boston Providence Highway District, the residential neighborhood that's right near it, is that we have a visual compatibility issue in the sense that we have commercial uses and then residential uses. And I think to some extent, this plan harmonizes those two uses by having the commercial use in the front and the green space to preserve the residential use in the back. Whereas, to Ms. Churchill's point, as to the prior application, the requirement of the 100-foot setback rule had this parking far closer to the neighborhood than it is in this iteration. And again, more than double the spaces were sought at, at that original application. And as for the fiscal benefit to the town currently, this is an undeveloped piece of property. It will have a net tax benefit. I can't speak to abatements. I don't think that that's a really germane to this analysis. But for all those reasons, we think that it does satisfy the special permit criteria. And it's much different than the plan that was provided to the, the planning board. And particularly because of the 100-foot rule and that plan being double the parking spaces and less green space, it's simply an apple-to-oranges comparison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon?
Yeah, just one quick question, and maybe it's for our, our building inspector, just so I understand. So, the 86 spaces that are currently existing, that is where we could have vehicles that do not have plates on them. Whereas, the 68 spaces that are being requested tonight would have to be plated, registered vehicles.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you. No further questions.
Joanna?
No questions.
Matt, question for you, and I didn't bring my slide ruler. The area that's being, the yellow area, how many square feet is that?
Oh, I don't have it, Mr. Chair. If I could find the lot area, it's 40, it would be 40% of the lot area. I, in the interest of time, I, oh, actually, I do have it.
That's actually all.
What's 0.4 times 80,000? .4 times 80,000?
Yep.
Alex is presenting.
Oh, Alex is probably on it also. So it's 40% pavement times 80,000 square feet of land.
Okay.
32,000.
And just a question for the building inspector, Gary. If nothing went there at all, would this property owner have any rights to just clearcut it?
There would be no, there would be no permit that would be required.
You could just clearcut it. Okay.
And just as the question came up above, when the business was originated, their CO was issued August 23.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, what are the wishes of the board? We could continue this, or we could close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the board?
I'm prepared to close the public hearing after a couple of nights of testimony.
Okay. Is there a second? Is a motion to close the public hearing? If there's not a second, there can be another motion, but right now?
I mean, there's nothing, when we close a public hearing, to bar deliberation internally. We just...
Correct. We don't have to, we do not have to vote tonight, but we can close the public hearing and then deliberate, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so there's been a motion to table, excuse me, to close the public hearing, and it has been seconded by Rachel. Matt, on to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, so now is there a motion to continue this to our next meeting for deliberation? Or do you want to talk about it now?
Well, practically speaking, we have seven minutes.
Yeah. So is that a motion to continue, to continue for the sole purpose of deliberation and voting?
To the January...
To the January 7th, 2025 meeting that would be held here at the Norwood Senior Center, 275... What street is it? Prospect Street?
Prospect.
Norwood. And that would be strictly for deliberations and voting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Joanna, to continue? Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes, this has been continued for the sole purpose of deliberation amongst the board and voting. Thank you, everyone, this evening.
Thank you.
The next matter is, before us is 92 Union Street. Let me get the public hearing record, and I got so much paper here, I'm probably not going to find it in time.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was I asking? Is that for Union?
Oh, here it is. Notice is hereby given, we would ask everyone if they can have their conversations in the hallway. Notice is hereby given that the board appeals at the town of Norwood, hold a public hearing on December 3rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM, on the request of the Norwood Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer Gary Pelletier, case 24-30, with respect to the property located at 92 Union Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062. Single residence S2 zoning district, the hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062. It will be also available for remote participation via Google Meet. The commissioner requests that the board revoke a special permit granted by the board in case number 23-15 at their July 11, 2023, meeting pursuant to special permit conditions number 1, 5, and 6. These conditions require that approved construction must be in conformity and submitted plans and approved by local authorities prior to use, and state that the board may revoke the approved plan if the conditions of the decisions are violated, any zoning remedy that may be required. An inheritance to the Norwood zoning law, zoning bylaws shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are in coverage to attend the hearing and make their view known to the board. Plans are on file with the application, the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and may be requested by mailing, emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This notice ran on the Norwood record on November 14, 2024, and November 21, 2024. And people ask, how do we enforce it? Well, here's our building commissioner. Building Commissioner, Mr. Pelletier, please.
Just a quick summary and an update. One of the property owners is here. I just wanted to clarify for the board. The special permit that was issued for this was issued to Mr. Maldonado, who was a contractor at the time. The violation stems from his failure to construct the approved addition in conformance with the plans, and also to, he failed to construct it in accordance with the code and put it into use prior to getting approval from the building department. I would like to request that the board not revoke the special permit, but suspend it until such time that it's brought and properly modified and brought into full compliance. The owners I have spoken to at length, Mr. Maldonado has failed to address the matters at all. I have filed a complaint against his license with the state. That's pending. The homeowners have obtained, retained counsel on their behalf to represent them. He is not here this evening. Mr. Sanchez's wife had to leave as well. I'll let him speak here, but the intent of this is to make sure that we protect the permit decision and the conditions that it was granted under until such time as it can be properly modified and then be in full compliance with the bylaws and the decision and the conditions that it was issued under.
Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Maldonado? You're complete agreement with what the building inspector just said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the building commissioner has asked us to suspend this until...
I mean, Mr. Sanchez or?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanchez. I was looking at the page that said Mr. Maldonado. You're in agreement with what the building inspector said, and you know what you have to do?
Yes.
Okay.
We already hired some other contractors.
Okay, no. Gary has sent us a memo, and I think, is everyone clear on it? Any questions for the, for the building inspector?
Nope.
Regarding this?
The suspension, you would come back to us to unsuspend once you've satisfied yourself?
What they would need to do, and the board can certainly address it as part of this modification, is that the applicant will likely change. Mr. Maldonado, who was the original applicant, is no longer going to be retained by the homeowners. So they would need to bring a new contractor. They would need to either apply represented by themselves or by their attorney to modify the decision, basically, which is to modify the plans to reflect what was actually built. Because what they built is not what was approved. The exterior is different, the floor plan is different. So that would be one of the conditions, and the other would be that they actually adhere to the condition of obtaining a use and occupancy permit before putting it into use.
And how long do you think that period of suspension, what would be appropriate?
I think it's suspended until they take those steps. Because if they don't take those steps, they're in violation of the decision. And they won't get a certificate of occupancy.
And then you could come back to us?
Correct. So what we would preserve would be the financial sanctions that were available for noncompliance with our bylaws, which is a fine for each violation per day. So I think that those would be tabled while they're in the process. It's really no fault of their own. There's no malfeasance here by the owner. This is a bad contractor that didn't follow the rules and then abandoned them. That's essentially what happened here.
That's exactly what happened. We trust the worst of them, and I should have to trust the best.
So they've had bigger problems from a building code standpoint, but again, because the building permit was predicated on the special permit, and that special permit is in violation, it affects everything from, I can't, I can't give them a new building permit. I can't give them a certificate of occupancy. They'll never be able to sell their house or close on a sale until this gets straightened out. It's got to start with the special permit at least being applied to be modified. So they're aware of that. Their council's aware of it. And I honestly believe that they're in the process of trying to correct the problems, find a new contractor, amend the plans, get an architect to amend the plans, and then bring those back before the board for approval.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Yeah? Okay, there is a recommendation from the building inspector that we suspend the permit for 92 Union Street upon, until the building inspector receives all the necessary documentation and approvals from all inspectors, and then reports back to the board, and then we unsuspend it, and you issue the...
Yeah, they would need to file for a modification. So they'll need to come back to you with a new set of plans
Okay.
for your review and approval to modify, and a new applicant.
New applicant, okay. And you understand that. Okay. So as explained by the building inspector, to suspend the present permit and have the applicant submit new plans and come back before the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval is their motion.
I'll make that motion modified with a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Oh, yeah, because it'll be a new application. Well...
Right.
Yeah, because it's a new application.
We do open new public hearings when we get requests for modifications.
So before we take that vote, a motion's been made, thank you, Rachel. Motion's been made to close the public hearing by Rachel. Is there a second? Seconded by Shannon. Al, to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And as the motion, as I forgot, no, the motion to suspend the present permit for 92 Union Street until the applicant provides a new plan, set of construction plans and plans, and appears before, and a new application, and appears before the Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Moved by Shannon?
Second.
Seconded by Rachel. Matt?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, good luck, sir. Please, take care of that. Are you over at BU Facilities?
Yeah.
Larry Darcy still over there?
Still there.
Tell him Mike Shan said hello.
Oh, I will.
A good friend. Okay, we, do we have time to, I want to do those reconsiderations because I don't want to hold those people up. And do you have an agenda that you can read for me, Al, that we're taking up for reconsideration?
So the first one is 25 Worthen Circle.
Okay, on 25 Worthen Circle, there's been a motion made to reconsider by Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. So the motion to reconsider, consideration is not debatable. It's for the purpose of, reported by our planning department that even though we had a majority of three, you still need four votes. And that's the reason for the reconsideration. So on the motion, Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel, Shannon? You were not here. Who?
Al.
Oh, did you? The Mullen? You submitted the Mullen report? Yes.
Yes, I have.
Okay, yes. And the matter's up for reconsideration. As explained, we do need four votes, not three. And is there, the motion's not debatable, but this is debatable. Is there anybody, any questions on this?
So I would, I would move to approve the same motion that was heard in the initial hearing.
Hearing, yep. Okay, motions are made to approve as presented in our November meeting. It's been seconded. Matt, did you read the Mullen?
I did.
Yeah, Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel, Shannon?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Next one is case number and address?
Next is 71 Hawthorne Street, which is case number 24-26.
A motion is made by Shannon to reconsider this matter for the purpose of a correction. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Matt on the motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. It's on a reconsideration. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll...
I had good language last time.
Yeah, I'll, I move to approve, subject to the same conditions as in the...
November meeting.
November meeting.
Yes. Okay, motion's been made to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon. Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes. And one more?
29 Everett Ave., which is case 24-28.
A motion's been made by Shannon to reconsider this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rachel. On the motion to reconsider, Al?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, this matter is now on reconsideration for the same reason of 25 Worthen Street. Is there a motion to approve, or is there any discussion?
So motion to approve, subject to the same conditions as in the November meeting?
Very good, very good.
Second?
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Shannon? Al?
Yes.
Yes, all those matters are approved. I think we'll just do the minutes and the schedule, the next meeting.
Can we approve the hearing date of January 7th?
Yes, good point. A motion to approve the hearing date of January 7th at 275 Prospect Street.
So moved.
Second?
And Matt?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And a motion to adjourn by Al?
Second?
Seconded by... Adjourned. Just adjourned, yeah, just to adjourn, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. And it's been seconded?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you, NC.